Wasn't internet reliability problem.
No, no.
Well, it started with the wifi being off and it just escalated from there.
Yep. Nothing like technology issues. All right, I'd like to call this Board of Supervisors' regular meeting for November 3rd to order. If we could all stand for a Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Moment of silence. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented unless anybody has a change they'd like to make.
Just call your attention to the fact there is an addendum item on the consent agenda, which is just a request to authorize us to advertise a budget amendment public carrying for your next meeting.
Okay, well then I'll amend my motion to in to adopt the agenda as amended.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
It's a motion. I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion to second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Thank you. All right, moving right into Superintendent Presentation on Schools.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. It's a beautiful day in Rappahannock County in the autumn. It's beautiful. It's been another wonderful month of growth and adventure and achievement for our students in Rappahannock. A few highlights from October. Our CES students had a blast at our festive trunk or treat event on Friday, which featured 25 creative trunks, our biggest turnout yet. A huge thank you to Catherine Todd and Bethany Bostic for organizing this much anticipated event and to all the community members who helped make it a spooktacular success. Dressed in costumes ranging from charming storybook characters, spooky witches, the kids collected treats from decorated trunks and a haunted bus, our first ever haunted bus, which was great. The event was a fantastic way to bring student, staff, and families together in the Halloween spirit. Last month, our CPS recognizing recognized bullying prevention month with meaningful activities throughout our schools. We celebrated Start With Hello Week, a program from Sandy Hook Promise, spearheaded by school psychologist Kathy Zare Rhodes, which teaches students empathy and empowers them to prevent social isolation by building an inclusive community. Students completed activities to promote kindness, express gratitude, and say hello to others. At the end of the week, students and staff wore colorful wristbands and were encouraged to greet others with a matching color. Unity Day was celebrated with students in grades five through seven participating in a spirited pep rally led by the SCA, featuring team-building games that fostered collaboration and strengthened relationships. Seventeen RCHS juniors and seniors traveled by charter bus to the University of Virginia for an inspiring campus visit. Students explored what it takes to gain admission, learned about financial aid options, discovered the wide range of degree programs available, and heard about the many opportunities UVA offers. They also engaged with a student panel and toured the university's most historic areas, experiencing firsthand the beauty and prestige of the campus. Additionally, RCHS students traveled to James Madison University for a campus tour, where they were lucky enough to see many RCHS alumni and even the school's president. Opportunities like these are invaluable in helping our students envision the plan for their futures. Career exploration continues to be a priority at our CPS. Ms. Burgess's career investigation students had the opportunity to visit the Rappahannock County Sheriff's Office for an engaging and informative experience. During their visit, students learned about various career paths in law enforcement, behind-the-scenes operations, and the impressive capabilities of drone surveillance technology. They met with Sheriff Compton, Lieutenant Jenkins, and her 911 dispatch team, Deputy Fletcher, and Major Dodson, who led a fascinating demonstration of the drones operations. RCHS eighth graders also participated in the Worlds of Work, an immersive career exploration experience where students visited 10 different industry sectors and participated in brief hands-on activities. As part of our Trade of the Month program this month, Mr. Chris King, a talented diesel mechanic at the bus shop, visited students this month. He shared valuable insights about his career, explaining that skilled diesel mechanics can earn up to $150 an hour for their work. Mr. King offered practical advice on earnings certifications and spoke about the many skills he has developed throughout his career. A proud RCHS graduate, former student, Mr. King began driving a school bus in 2013, and he was only 18, and later earned his Diesel Mechanic certification with support from the school division. He has been serving our CPS ever since, and we are so grateful to Mr. King for taking the time to share his experience and inspire our students to explore the many rewarding opportunities in skilled trades. On October 15th, the My Future kindergarten kickoff for the 25-26 school year was held. The kindergarten students gathered to celebrate joining the My Future program, met several Family Futures Board members, and heard an engaging overview of the program from Mrs. Sherry. Each student also went home with a special goodie bag, complete with a financially themed book generously donated by the Rappahannock County Library. Thanks to the support of the local nonprofit Family Futures, all our CPS students in grades K through six are now enrolled in the My Future program. Additionally, the Panther Pumpkin Patch held on October 16th was a huge success, where the sixth grade financial literacy program gave every RCES student the chance to explore the Panther Pumpkin Patch and pick one of the 600 pumpkins spread across the field behind the oxygen. The class of 2026 reached a major milestone in civic responsibility when they were invited to register to vote. Voter Registrar Kim McKeernan provided a brief presentation to seniors and assisted with onsite student registration. Mr. Day then led an engaging discussion on the importance of civic participation, the voting process, and some of the challenges and limitations that impact voter turnout. Students also explored their own beliefs and habits around elections and the ways information shapes civic engagement. Meanwhile, sixth and seventh grade SCA candidates presented their speeches to their classmates, sharing their ideas and goals for the school year, and students in grades fifth through seventh practiced democracy by casting their votes for the office of President, Vice President, Secretary, and Historian. Looking ahead, we warmly invite you to join us for the annual RCHS Veterans Day Assembly, which will be on Tuesday, November 11th at 11:00 a.m., as well as our RCES Veterans Day Parade, which will take place at 1:15. That's where students are encouraged to bring photos of those they wish to honor or invite the veteran to come walk with them in the parade. It's a very moving experience. So either one, we would love to have any of you to come. Thank you as always for your support and partnership as we work together to provide an exceptional education for every student in Rappahannock County. You have any questions for me?
Dr. Grimsley, I never have questions for you, and then you talk, and then I have a lot of questions. But it's that's more a compliment than anything because your presentations are engaging and helpful. Since we talked in a small group recently, and some thoughts came to my mind at least in advance of our upcoming budget season, I just wanted to put some of these on the public record so that at least to the extent I'm one of five people know where I stand on behalf of the folks I represent. So as we all well know, we've got some competing spending priorities, and also I think the spirit of Rappahannock County, Virginia is we save as much as we can where we can within reason. So in the spirit of recognizing that we'll have to spend some money in the coming year on or two years, or three years, or 30 years on a new courthouse, on paid EMS personnel to bolster our excellent volunteers, and then of course to support our schools, that's as you and Dr. Mills always point out, it's only going to get more expensive to educate. With those with those priorities and the reality that our our school population is much lower than when Ron McCullough, who's here today, served on the school board, I believe he said recently that there were 1,200 students when he was on the school board now, or maybe, and you can correct me if I'm off on this, maybe 750 students. So with that backdrop, I just wanted to say that I hope that, as I've said several years running now, I hope that you and members of the school board and your administration will look in the mirror and ask yourselves some very difficult questions. And the questions that I would ask as an outside observer of the school system are these. Number one, what what can you do to better optimize the physical facilities that you have? And to what extent would facility consolidation provide you with a huge gain in terms of your ongoing year-to-year spending? Second, I hear from many people that both who've served in the school system and who are currently serving the school system, that it feels like your non-instructional personnel might be on the heavy side. And so I hope you will look, as we enter this next budget season, at personnel costs and overhead related non-instructional employees. I think those are my two two main questions to ask you to ask yourselves. And I hope we'll hear more about your examination of what I think are two very important lines of inquiry that I've just articulated. And then third, I recently met with Ms. Gardner Lapham, who serves on the board of RAP CE, which used to be called RAPU CE, meaning continuing education, I believe. And it seems that RAP CE serves students who are just interested in learning about interesting things on one side of their curriculum, which they call lifelong learning. And then they've had various initiatives for healthcare-related programs and training. So when I look at the spectrum of technical training in our region, I see on one end of the spectrum a very local and able organization called RAP CE. And then on the other end, and a huge shout out to my awesome colleague Donna Comer and her colleagues on the workforce side at Laurel Ridge Community College. Ms. Donna and I were in attendance recently at Ms. Comer and her colleagues kickoff of a new facility for their electrical line workers program at the Middletown Campus of Laurel Ridge. So when I when I look at Laurel Ridge serving students who are interested in the trades or other technical education, and then I look at RAP continuing education here locally, perhaps doing the same thing either on a smaller scale or filling a certain gap, and then the schools with a focus, at least in part, on training our students for careers in the trades. My I guess my request to you is going forward that you find every way possible to work with both Laurel Ridge on a regional level and with RAP CE on a local level to find cost savings and to make sure that they're not duplicative efforts across these three organizations that are providing potentially the same services to the same market. And if there's cost savings to be found in there, and most importantly, opportunities for our students through careful coordination across those three institutions, I hope you'll all take advantage of that. And then finally, on the My Futures Program, I just want to remind everyone that the Virginia Association of Counties provided state recognition for that excellent My Futures Program. And it occurred to me that as you're teaching your kindergarteners, for starters, keying financial management skills, placing savings over spending, I hope you also encourage a few of them to run for the County Board of Supervisors one day because we want savers and not spenders. So thank you for all you do, and thanks for your update.
Thank you.
Hi, I will echo what Supervisor Witsen just said about the non-instructional staffing. I do I do think that needs a good scrubbing. The next thing I wanted, I woke up this morning, and I wondered if I had dropped this, and I don't think I did. So I was just wondering if there was an update. Back in September, it looks like maybe we applied for a grant or started to apply for a grant that would help with the roof on the elementary school. Is there an update? Like, did we submit that application? Is there an update? When do we expect to hear from that?
We did submit an application for that. I inquire about it. Recently, they don't have, the state doesn't have a date by which they're going to let people know.
Okay.
Last, in last year's iteration of the same grant, they announced awardees in mid to late December. But again, when I inquire, they didn't have a.
They did. Okay, all right.
Yeah, we did submit a grant too, since you said grants, for the Spark Program. It was a collaboration among many organizations to try to sustain it for three years while we try to leverage additional funds through CCA subsidy licensing to try to make it much more sustainable without so many sources. And one other thing that you mentioned about the non-instructional personnel, we are undergoing an efficiency review of that this year. Already signed the contract, so that's going to happen. And also to build more transparency into the invisible work that a lot of these people do, if you go onto our website at rappahannockschools.us and click on the About, you'll now see a tab that says about our administrative staffing. And you'll see an org chart with the explicit directions and job descriptions of which what each does, where they're located, and how it's all organized. So hopefully that'll bring a little bit more transparency to those roles and the management and the incredible work that those folks do.
Do you know at the end of the year, there was a bit of a morale issue, some of it based on budgeting and some of it based on other issues? I'm wondering how you think it's going this year.
Yeah, this is an interesting phenomenon. I was just in Richmond this week and talking to super superintendents everywhere. And education is experiencing quite a trough in morale across the board. They're experiencing much higher turnover rates as a new normal across the board. Trying to hold on to career professionals is much more difficult everywhere. The types of stressors that just read a huge article on this, we're studying it in depth, and that's why we're doing a lot of the things we're doing, like with the Reach Initiative and morale boosters and conferences and professional development that we're trying to do. It's a tough time right now. It's hyper-politicized. It's we are experiencing more challenging student behaviors than we've seen in years past after COVID. So it just takes a little little more tender loving care. But I mean, as far as morale as a whole, I feel like we're in the right direction, right community. So it's it's tough not to be happy here.
Thank you. All right, thank you so very much.
Thanks.
Next presentation, we have Venture Central Food and Beverage Business Growth Network.
Hi, thank you all for having me. You may be wondering why you're seeing me under Venture Central because the last couple of times I've been here, it was with the Small Business Development Center. So I'm Rebecca Haydock. Thank you for having us today. Just a really brief background, and then I'm going to turn it over to Hope to tell you about this project. But Venture Central was formed just before the Central Virginia SBDC really started to grow to serve a larger area. I think it was 2019. Took them a while to get going. It was formed with the University of Virginia and Albemarle County and the city of Charlottesville to support programs and projects more in the innovation sectors and in the cluster scale-up and growth sectors. It was quiet for a period of time, and then it got a large US EDA bill to scale grant that was about attracting more and more diverse investors to invest in these innovative companies and our community businesses and so on. And that grant, while we were at SBDC, we saw that that grant was not being executed on. And there was a conversation about giving the money back to the federal government. And we said, no, no, that cannot happen because as a region, we won't get another one. So I ended up going over to Venture Central part-time and managing that grant. We managed to execute on it, but in the course of that, brought together all of the folks and a lot of entrepreneurs that are supporting different industries. And there was determined to be a need for another entity to work on the programs and projects that don't fit in the Small Business Development Center or Community Investment Collaborative or some of the others that are serving the region. So Venture Central is now the house of, there's a local tech accelerator. It's called 434. It houses that. It's housing programs and projects that are designed to take us into the future and have the jobs that will maintain our businesses and our industries into the future. So it's more of an acceleration and longer-term focused entity to try to attract resources, grants, you know, supports, spaces, things like that. So with that, unless you have any questions about that, I'll turn it over to Hope. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is indeed Hope Lawrence. I have been with Venture Central for almost, I think I'm on year two now. Prior to that, I had a granola company in Fluvana County called Hudson Henry Baking Company. Before that, I was in finance in New York and London. My husband's Australian. We lived in Australia. I was the training manager for all financial advisors in the state of New South Wales in Australia. But got out of the rat race after a while there, moved to beautiful Fluvana County and started the granola company in the basement of my 1830s home, which was exciting. I had a two-year-old and a five-year-old at the time. So what we're talking about today, and I don't, I don't need the slides. Did you want to use the slides?
Oh, I assumed you were going to use the slides.
Okay. We can maybe go next slide, and then I'll see how we go. Yeah, we'll do that in a second. So I think my definitely my having the granola company, which I call the Granola Years, and seeing what a difficult sector it is to grow a food and beverage company has led me to my work with Venture Central. What we have now through Go Virginia Region Nine is a planning grant. And the planning grant runs from February of this year to February of 2026. And it is a planning grant for a food and beverage business accelerator. So the premise is, and the planning grant is to explore that, you know, is there a need for a food and beverage accelerator? If so, what shape should it be? How would it be? How would it work? What have you? The premise is that we have plenty of entities that help a business through incubation, right? So we have the SBDC, CIC, Shared Kitchens, et cetera, even our, you know, our local economic development groups in our different counties. They can help a business start and get set up, maybe get them to their first farmer's market, maybe into their first store. But there's no one doing the work to really help a business scale. So in my world with the Granola Years, my goal was $1 million in revenue. And I'm like, it's going to take me five years, and that's what it's going to happen. And I think my the goal behind that is only 4% of women's businesses ever reach $1 million. So I'm like, great, that's one way to do. I thought it would take me five years. It took more like seven or eight years. But I got there. So as I said, so the premise with this is that there's no one doing that acceleration work, and that is indeed what we're finding with this planning grant. So we have found that 69% of businesses in Region Nine are stuck between 100,000 and revenue up to 1 million. And I would say most of them are stuck around the 100, 200, 300,000 mark. 86% of the folks that we surveyed do indeed want specialized acceleration services. So they have their company, they want to grow, they need help doing it. So 86% said, yes, we would want help with that. And it's also because only 33% rate the existing resources as good or excellent. So that's a large percentage that said they are not good or excellent. So the planning that we have now, which is actually brings us up to our first slide, what we plan to provide is an accelerator program, local training that would be open to all food and beverage entrepreneurs. So that would include your farms, caterers, food trucks, and obviously food and beverage CPG-type businesses. And then also an online resource hub. So during my Granola Years and while I've been working on this planning grant, I've collected a wide range of templates and guides and lists of buyers and lists of distributors or what have you. So an online resource hub would pull all of that information together into one place and make it really easy for food and beverage business to get information that they need. The goal for, and maybe we'll do next slide. Okay, I'll come back to goals. So as we've been working on the project, we've been talking to each of the localities and talking about, well, where is this important? Who cares about this issue and where is it important? We reviewed your priorities here in Rappahannock, and we feel like we this project would support your priorities with farm viability, support agritourism and heritage economy, and then making regional connections. So with the farms in particular and agritourism, when I talk to other clients, I and when I talk to a farm or a caterer or a food truck or what have you, I always talk to them about, you know, is there a signature item that they are already producing that they could take to the stores and sell at wholesale and become a consumer packaged good? So, you know, increase profitability for those businesses and then adding an additional income stream. So maybe it's a farm selling on farm. Can you take that off farm? Can you start selling it to a store? Can you get wider distribution? So I think with farm viability and agritourism and heritage economy, definitely working with those businesses about profitability and revenue stream. And they would do that through really all three pieces, the resource hub, the accelerator, and then the resource hub accelerator and and the local event. Thank you so much. I was like, what is the third? The local event. And then regional connections, so making connections to buyers, distributors, and just each other. So connecting businesses with other businesses, making those connections, learning from your peers, and just having someone to talk to about their business. And it's always very, very helpful when you're you're going through a tough industry like food and beverage. Next slide. So our outcomes with the project, we we look at the Go Virginia outcomes that they set forward. So it's businesses served, businesses expanded, and new higher-paying jobs. So we, at least 50 businesses served, I think more, businesses expanded as far as increased rate of revenue, and then higher-wage jobs. So again, with my granola company, I started out with just production assistants, you know, people helping me make the granola. As my business grew, I then went on to hire a sales representative. I hired a operations manager. So those jobs would have higher wages than just the hourly production assistant. And then, as I said, Rappahannock specific benefits, just to close, we would have a local training for all your businesses. The online resource hub would be would be open to all businesses. We would have the accelerator for, that would be an application-based accelerator, and then support for your farms, your agribusinesses, and your CPG companies. And I think one of our goals as a whole of this project is just regional visibility as a food and beverage friendly place to start a business, grow a business, and most importantly, stay so that you don't feel like you have to go somewhere else to grow your business. You can do that in our region with the support that you need for your business. So with that, I'll take actually questions before I hand it back to Rebecca, and she will give you a little bit additional information.
What's what's the area you referred to, an area that we belong?
Oh, sorry. I should have explained that. So Go Virginia Region Nine is the Go Virginia region that we work in as a whole. So that's Albemarle, Charlottesville, and surrounding counties. So up to Fauquier, Rappahannock, Green, Madison, Orange, Louisa, Fluvana, Nelson, I was in Louisa. I don't know if I said Louisa. So this is a Go Virginia Region Nine project that's funding the planning grant. And then we would apply for Go Virginia Region Nine implementation grant.
There's just planning going on at this point.
Planning until until February, and then Rebecca, do you want to? Rebecca will talk about the next phase of the project, which is the implementation phase.
I'll just settle up here next to you.
Okay.
Yeah, so Go Virginia is the the state money. And in fact, I don't know if you've all been following Go Virginia, but they just wiped out their entire million-dollar budget in the last meeting with a go-tech project that's come out of IALR in Danville. So that's going to be starting. So we're actually applying for a state application, assuming Go Virginia approves our final report and action plan. So this one year was to find out how many food businesses are there? Is there actually a need for food and business acceleration? I knew through my experience with CIC and SBDC from year one, no one had the food expertise that we needed. We actually, you may recall, early on in the pandemic, we did a little program where we were looking for food businesses to work with this curate consultant. And we ended up having eight companies that had food products. And as soon as the consultant program was over, we didn't have the specialists that we needed. So we didn't have connections to distributors. We didn't have the ability to help them work on their branding, get them in the stores. It's a it's a big area for, you know, our agribusiness and food region. We just seem to have the right resources. The right resources. We've got four commercial kitchens in this region, um, with of course Carver Center, Co- you know, Culpepper being a large one. Y'all have a big building that did food, which we've got our eye on for, you know. Could something go in there, right? Um, and can we produce food again? And get the agribusinesses, I'm an old farm girl. Like, increase their margins, help them get their products into value added products. Um, so just after the research, hope is determined, yes, there's a need, there's a desire. Now we've gotta see if we can get it funded. Um, so Go Virginia will do industry cluster scale up, so that's why we are hoping that we're gonna be invited to submit. An application after the final report in January. Um, and then if that's, then we. Do implementation starting in March, it would go to the local council, and then it would go to the state for approval in June.
How's the uh, local match funding requests distributed? Is it by population? Would we be looking at a very small buy-in? In comparison to those much larger counties?
Right, just like we did it at SBDC, we looked at it the same way. Um, so our request of Rappahannock is a total of six thousand dollars over two years. Um, so three thousand dollars a year. And um, by way of example, Louisa County would be twelve thousand five hundred. Um, the ask of Albemarle, I think, is twenty. So we don't have confirmations on everybody yet because we are in that budget cycle. Um, but generally speaking, so far we've. Received positive response to these numbers and. In order to run this, it, it would need to pay for um, Hope full time. And some contractors that have specialty in food, as well as. Folks that was, work with distribution agreements, you know. Technical experts, just, it's a very similar model to what we've done at SBDC. Except this is food industry, food and agribusiness specific.
So then if you have all these counties participating and deferring the cost, which is great. Um, for a small county like us, um, how is the award distribution uh. Divvied out, for lack of a better word?
In terms of rep, like.
Yeah. Um, I, I could foresee that this is very competitive, especially if you're including a county like Albemarle.
Mm-hmm.
Um, which has much, much higher population than we do and, and presumably would have many more applications than we. Would. Um, w- would we be guaranteed an awardee every year or two awardees every year to participate? I, I. I could see that it would be problematic as an elected official if we're playing in for a program. And none of our local producers are ever awarded the opportunity to participate.
Okay, great question. Do you wanna answer that? Or do you want me to answer?
I'll let you answer.
Okay, so, um, so an accelerator program, the typical model is they have to have certain criteria to get into the accelerator and. Um, just a reminder, there's three parts to this program. So in the first part, which we're actually hoping if we don't get the Go Virginia grant, we wanted to ask municipalities. To help us do that, which is that resource hub. That online resource hub and the ne- and creating the network. So the agribusinesses know the CPGs and the contract manufacturers. We wanna find a way to fund that regardless of if Go Virginia gives us the grant. Because that information and those peer networks are the crux of helping entrepreneurs move forward. So that will be available to everybody on a completely open basis. The second part is the in municipality programming, and that's where Hope talked about not only making sure we're reaching who's. You know, somebody's in their kitchen making granola or making um, apple butter or whatever it is. Um, but also get the agribusinesses out, get the food trucks and the restaurants out to say, do you have a specialty item that could go CPG? And Hope will talk about, how do you do that? What does that look like? To hopefully inspire more businesses to grow and create greater tax revenue. So that's sort of part two. And then part three is the accelerator, which is, we think, and especially based on assuming we're gonna have a total budget of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. We're working on a lot of grants and foundations to try to increase that so we can create more service, but. If that's the case, we would assume eight to ten people accepted into the accelerator programming, which is eight months of programming. And the criteria for that are at least a hundred thousand dollars in sales. And some demonstration of velocity on shelf or, you know, it could be through farmers markets. And then there will be a team of people with representatives that will help judge those and determine who gets into the accelerator. So it's, it's done more on a grading basis, not on a, we're gonna, you know, take. If, if somebody comes, you could have five people from Rappahannock, if they all meet the criteria, then there's a great chance that. They're gonna get in and hopefully we'll have identified other grants, so we have more capacity to do more acceleration. But it's entirely possible there won't be any applicants that meet those criteria, and then we've gotta get them networked, get them into the resource hub. And get them connected to those growth assets like SBDC and CIC to take them to that point. Does that answer your question?
I think you answered it in a, in a circuitous.
Right, I'm trying to give you the whole picture, cause they.
Some people that might qualify, and if you don't have people that qualify, we will work with them to try to get them to qualify in the future.
Exactly. Thank you for doing that. I am a little long-winded, sorry.
It's okay. You, you, you gave the professional uh, explanation. I just needed to make it shorter to retain it.
So my question, my experience with Go Virginia Nine, um, that web, um, and, and. Virginia Career Works, Piedmont, all of it. Um, Rappahannock, Fauquier, Madison, all those three counties kind of fall in. Those districts but don't quite fit because they are very heavy Charlottesville and Albemarle focused. Um, so my question, you said you had surveyed and those who had answered. Very few of them said good and excellent. My, mm, I'd be curious to know where those folks were from. Because like, for instance, Virginia Career Works does not have a physical presence in Fauquier County nor in Rappahannock County. Our, our people would have to travel to get those services. Um, so that would be my question, like, who did you survey when, when you mentioned your survey? Also, what kind of physical presence would you have um, here? You mentioned a lot of online um. Resources, but I, I think, I imagine I could see. An instance where people would want some one-on-one coaching, um, and unless you're gonna have a physical presence um, near. Uh, I can also see a scenario where people are not gonna take advantage of it. Cause traveling to Charlottesville, while a beautiful drive, is not altogether that convenient.
I'm gonna let Hope answer this, but just really quickly, Hope is from Fauquier County originally.
Go ahead.
They have a huge contract manufacturer there that can scale, and she's also on the board of the Carver Kitchen. We've been spending a lot of time up here. Um, yeah, okay, but you go ahead.
Hey, I don't wanna answer the question for you, but you can, you're always welcome to host a, a open house at the. Uh, administrative building here in the county.
Beautiful. I was gonna say, so we would have uh, online for as much as we could, right? So have virtual meetings with the accelerator. The local training would, would be in person here, and we'll work with Bonnie and Gary to, you know, find a spot for that. Um, and then my plan would be hybrid for the accelerator. So if we had two or three businesses from up north, we would have a meeting here and, you know, it would be virtual. You could either attend in person or you could attend virtually. As hard as the, as the survey results, I would have to check and then I can give that information to Bonnie and Gary about. Rappahannock, um, businesses that answered the surveys. Off the top of my head, I. I haven't been looking, I mean, I have, I have a database of, so for Rappahannock, I have twenty businesses for Rappahannock between farms, CPG. One of those was the broker, so I put him as other. Uh, so twenty businesses locally as far as who we found. And that's, that was really step one of the project is to try to get people out of the woodwork. Or, you know, a lot of the counties, if, you know, if you don't have a business tax or a way of finding the businesses, I've been searching. Um, I, my first survey, actually, there's been a couple, but my first survey was just literally. Uh, a call for people to self-identify and say, yes, I'm in this region, I have this type of business, you know, put me on your list. Um, but I'll, I'll circle back to them and give them that information as far as Rappahannock coverage.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you. Perfect.
Hi. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Super exciting. Um, just thinking about Rappahannock County in particular. Um, and I've been thinking about this more recently, given that beef prices are skyrocketing. I've always thought that. And I don't know if this, this is sort of self-criticism, I feel like from a county perspective, we should do a better job in terms of. Uh, marketing and branding, Rappahannock County origin products. It's always. I've always dreamed of a day where you sit down at a, a great restaurant in Washington DC or, or Northern Virginia and. And it's like, oh wow, they've got Rappahannock County beef on the menu. I'm, I'm getting that no matter what. Um, so my first question goes to, I don't think I heard it in terms of your primary areas of focus, but. On the marketing and branding side of businesses, and obviously as a veteran of a, a food company like yourself. Sounds like you did quite well. Um, I hope, I hope you'll bring some of your expertise to bear on. Um, helping, to the extent people need help, um, with branding and marketing. I know that I've got two colleagues to my left. Who are also veterans of food and beverage uh, businesses, Debbie and Van. And I think they both did an awesome job, really on their own, with getting their names out there for their businesses. My, um, but I, I would like to hear what you have to say about branding and marketing. And then the second thing is, um. That, and I'm sure since you um, are based in Fauquier, you're aware of the story. So in my voting district, we did have a food business called Virginia Chutney Company.
Yes.
And, um, the Turner family really did a super job and, and I think developed a great product. And really frankly, a great brand.
Yep.
And had shelf space and some pretty significant. Um, retail outlets and, um, unfortunately, um, that company did not survive. I don't know where their, um. Where that space, which is over on Alien Road, which is a place I've always wanted to do something with. It's a, it's sort of an eyesore in the, in the county. Um, and Virginia Chump, Chutney Company was one of a handful of. A businesses that started piecemeal, turning that real ice or um, building that was falling down into something useful. So I guess my second question to you is to the extent that. Virginia Chutney Company still has infrastructure there that might be usable. I mean, it was. Although they did an extensive amount of co-packing.
Right.
Outside of that facility, they still did have relatively significant production operations on site. And it occurs to me that as you're talking about food and beverage businesses, if there is still usable space and usable facilities there. Either for training or for some other business. I recognize you guys are not gonna be in the business of investing in companies, but um. I just wanna put that on your radar, that we might have something in the county that could advance someone. For a, a small scale food processing operation.
That's fantastic. And I think Bonnie, you, that was the information that you sent me. Um, so two points, just one on the marketing and branding. I think as a business scales, that's lesson number one that you have to learn really quickly is how do I. Market and brand my company to, you know, get on more shelves, um, and to grow beyond just a, a local producer. Um, an example of that, I have a client in Fluvana County. And as I was talking to her during this project, I said, do you sell outside of Virginia? And she was like, no, like I, I wouldn't know where to start. And then in my brain, I'm like, well, you just find stores in New York, or you, you know, you call and you pitch and you, you get your stores selling beyond Virginia. So what's second nature to someone who's done it? You know, it's not second nature to someone who hasn't done it yet. So that's where the peer connections will help and definitely the one-on-one support. Um, that these companies would get through the program. Um, and learning, learning how to expand their business to, to other um, states through branding and marketing. Um, and then second, yeah, so we've also been working with V E D P, so Virginia Economic Development Partnership. Um, Chris Ber- Chris Berger and Sean Malik with V E D P, um, they focus on food and beverage. Definitely looking at more co-packers for our region or co-manufactures. So the idea here, and again from my granola world, I would, would have loved to found a co-packer for granola. I say you can only stand on concrete seven hours a day for so many years. So my shoulder was hurting, my knees were hurting. Uh, I couldn't find one. I looked for a co-packer in everywhere that I could in Virginia. Uh, talked to someone in Colorado, talked to someone in North Carolina, up in New York. But you wanna be closer to a co-packer than five plus hours away. Um, so we can't promise that we're gonna find co-packers, but maybe that's something that could be done with that, um.
Yeah.
That site, but it is on our radar and it is on V E D P's radar, if I can speak for them. Um, is that something that we do know we need more of in this region? So I think this accelerator, again, if we get the funding and kick this off, is just the start of what we could do for food and beverage manufacturers. In our region, in our state, um, and just supporting the growth of businesses who wanna stay in Virginia.
And the last, last thing, um, obviously you're sort of in a. Startup phase here, but if, if your funding or your proposed funding sources come to fruition. I just wanted to make a personal appeal to you, should you ever need excellent, excellent legal counsel combined with. A person who really knows how to brand a small food and beverage business. I know a guy who is retiring soon from the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors.
Okay.
Um, who was on the cover of Beer Advocate Magazine.
Okay.
Um, with his brothers and who soon will be finishing law school.
Excellent.
And um, he's too modest to, to sing his own praises, so that's Van next to me.
Excellent, Van.
Hopefully you can find some space for him in the future.
We, we will connect.
Um, one, I just wanna make sure, and since Bonnie's involved, I'm sure it is happening, that the businesses of Rappahannock knows about this and they are engaged. At least at leadership level on what you're trying to do and.
Right, I was gonna say, so I'll, I'll give the details of who I've spoken to, but. Um, as I said, I've collected twenty so far, just businesses that I'm aware of, and then reached out through surveys and interviews.
Okay.
Um, cause I would think they could help with making sure that the businesses replied to you if they haven't yet.
Oh, perfect.
Little bit.
Hundred percent.
Businesses of Rappahannock is our pseudo-chamber organization.
Okay.
Oh, business of Rappahannock, okay, right. And two, um, I used to have a restaurant. I went through the period of time where microbreweries and. Um, wineries grew at an astronomical rate. Um, and part of the problem with their uh, growth and success was actually distribution. Because they were mom and pop shops that didn't have a way to distribute their product. And finally, I think the General Assembly allowed for the owner of the business to have their own little distribution company. Parent or somebody could do it. Um, I can see, I know we have one farm here that goes all the way to DC to sell their product. At the farmer's market. So I could see the opportunity for some sort of distribution if you had multiple businesses in one county. That you could get some distribution available that would kind of pick up from multiple locations and go someplace and sell.
Right.
Um, just a thought.
That would, and I, actually, I will also clarify that our grant is covering non-alcoholic.
Right.
Um, beverages, but we do have, um, the SBDC has a, um. A division that helps with craft beverages, and then we also have a wine grant at the moment going through Go Virginia, and they're looking at supporting the wineries.
I'm, I'm more interested in the food side, but.
Yeah.
Um, I just know that's how they got their boost and.
Right.
You know, granola all over Virginia is probably.
Well, and I also think that that's, comes from the connections, right? So you find someone else that is going to Virginia and you, you know, share a truck or, you know, making connections with others. And, and what everyone else is doing, working together.
Thank you for this presentation.
Thank you so much.
I do have one question, which is, um, so it's a, it's a local match, it's a regional match, right?
Correct.
From Louisa, Fluvana, Nelson, Green, Madison, Rappahannock, city of Charlottesville?
Yes, so we have Rebecca Mike.
Okay, gotcha.
Doing this right now, um.
And so just to follow up on Ms. Smith's, um, so is it like a ballpark? We'd be asked for six thousand?
Oh, so the grant, if, if this helps, is, the whole thing is two hundred thousand, we need a hundred thousand dollar match over two years, so fifty thousand a year.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and we did the usual, like, by population, we sort of, we just found that that's felt fair to everybody.
Okay. So that number was broken down by pop. So, so we'd be over two years, six thousand, and Albemarle would be twenty thousand.
Yeah.
So six thousand is like. Hmm, you know, uh, three times six is eighteen, so that proportion seems a little off to me. Um, just in terms of population. So I'm just wondering if, if we could get those numbers and dig down into how that kind of sorts out.
It's not a specific per capita.
Okay.
Sort of general. And part of it is, um, as you all know. And part of it is, um, as you all know, probably haven't been involved with Parker Kitchen, there was a big investment in Parker. In the city and the county of Albemarle, they made a huge investment in Beacon. So they are hesitant to put in very large dollars. Um, but we're also, Hope is finding really good distribution of food and of course agriculture. The city of Charlottesville doesn't quite align, right? Because there is no agriculture in the city and the food businesses in their opinion, they're more about restaurants than food production. Food production is going to move out into the counties. And with Fauquier being the top in terms of production, Hope effort is also pretty up there. Um, agribusiness is really figuring out.
Okay, so it's, it's not, it's, it's kind of tied to population, but it's not really.
It's not, it's not a per capita formula.
Because I think Ms. Smith does have an interesting point, which is that, um, there's, there's a lot of creative stuff happening around Albemarle and the city of Charlottesville and we can get lost in the noise. Um, you know, 6,000 compared to 20,000, I mean, we're paying quite a bit. When you look at the population size, I think Albemarle County's got almost 120,000 people. We have 7,300. So it will be something that I think that we should just take a look at, um, in terms of how we leverage those resources for our taxpayers. Um, just given if you look at our line item budgets, how much we even give to Laurel Ridge every year, it's not that much more than that.
Or maybe just guaranteeing that a business or two gets into the mix.
Or there's something, it would, it would be just really interesting to see how this will actually affect and we won't get lost in the noise before we can commit dollars to it. So we can show our constituents, hey, but it's just because we have a very small county and there's a lot of economic energy and a lot of people that surround us. And so that kind of gets lost sometimes on our, on our, on our citizens, just because that's just the way we are with being so small.
Well.
So just figuring out that number and how we can trace it would be great.
And two, um, along that line of thinking, I think the contribution to Laurel Ridge is roughly 7,000, to the Small Business Development Center is around 4,500. Virginia Career Works is around 1,700.
And we utilize them heavily.
Um, y- yeah, I, I mean, when you go and do the cost per person or company that used, um, I think Laurel Ridge comes out as a pretty good deal. I think, but, um, but Virginia Career Works does as well at 1,700, at just a very modest $1,700.
So one of the ways that, uh, staff has looked at this is that we, we just don't have any staff that can really do economic development in any way. And so, uh, when we can bring an outside resource in to, to do something, that's great because it's, it's something that gets set on the side as we're trying to get all the must-do projects around here.
Oh, yeah, I absolutely understand that.
Yeah, if helpful to another perspective, this is a, a startup grant, right? It's an implementation grant for something brand new. Um, our hope is that, and we're actually working with VEDP and others to try to identify strategic partners and foundations to fund this for the long term because we believe this is an asset that the state needs desperately and Region Nine seems to be the best positioned, at least we think it is. And we, we, we know it is. Nobody else has four commercial kitchens. Nobody else has these, this information and these resources that we have and we are a very strong agribusiness economy. And so we are more focused on who's making what with food, right? Not the tech businesses, the service businesses, that type of thing. Um, so it is, it's, it's that need to match that initial implementation grant to get us off the ground.
All right. Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have, I assume it's Lisa with the REMS Council.
Yeah, so I'm going to give an update on the recent joint meetings for the Rappahannock EMS Council and the Thomas Jonas, Thomas Jefferson EMS Council. And it's going to focus on the merger of these two entities per the redistricting mandated by the Virginia Department of Health. In July, the following things happened. REMS was identified as the surviving entity of the merger of these two, um, councils. The new name to keep the same moniker is going to be the Riviana Rappahannock EMS Council. Um, REMS will become part of ENVERS, that's a Northern Virginia Emergency Response System. And the vote was 20 to 14, so it wasn't an all-out, everybody wanted to do this. Um, ENVERS responded to the RFA from the Virginia Department of Health on behalf of REMS. In the most recent joint meeting of the REMS, uh, T-GEM Council, um, VDH approved ENVERS 201, the Region Five, which these two entities, uh, belong in. Um, REMS and T-GEM agreeing to the merger and were then authorized to deliver the necessary documentation to make this happen. The next step, the articles of the merger will be drawn up by the attorneys at ENVERS. Um, they, they've done this before and they don't expect any problems and this is supposed to have a target date of January 1. Um, there will be a motion needed in the next meeting to dissolve the merged organization and that's the REMS and the T-GEMS to become part of, um, ENVERS. Um, the Board of Directors will be replaced by an advisory committee. Um, the advisory committee will be involved in identifying the initiatives and the needs of the region. Um, representative, representation on this advisory committee has not been determined. It will be determined locally, but how this will occur is, is not yet been determined. Um, because right now we have like 50 people on the Board of Directors and that's too many people to make a decision, so they're going to have to figure out how we're going to cut this down and how everybody will be represented. Um, ENVERS will control finance, audits, materials and paperwork, which leaves more room for these two councils, which are now will be advisory boards, to concentrate on what are the needs of the area and how to get them. Um, the current state of the REMS building in Fredericksburg, the building will actually stay right now for the moment, um, and be sort of the place where we go to determine what those initiatives will be and then give it to ENVERS. The staffing plan, they will have to go through a new vetting process. Um, they will have a, ENVERS will have a competitive, um, hiring process, but the current, um, REMS employees and T-GEM employees will be considered because they do have knowledge of what is needed in the region. Um, there will be an expectation of dues for membership, but no increases, um, expected from what we have now. The advantages of the new system will be a centralized administration function, so leadership, as in the advisory board, can concentrate on the mission, on mission-focused work. We will have a dedicated team of protocol development, grant management, project planning and training. Um, ENVERS models supports EMS as well as preparedness, disaster response and healthcare system integration. It will eliminate the redundancies to maximize the use of funding that we receive and it will approve access to funding and resources for underserved areas. This combined regional voice through ENVERS will strengthen representation in legislation and funding forums. The cons of having this happen, although it is going to happen, is that areas under the ENVERS control is very large and diverse, so it may stretch resources, um, a little bit too thin. Um, and the perception that the Northern Virginia focus may not adequately serve rural and volunteer-based agencies, which is something I brought up, but I'm not sure that's going to be any different than what's happening right now. And that's sort of what is happening at the moment. I can take any questions.
Thanks a lot, Lisa. Um, so the, the merge, the, the success or an interest, uh, to the two organizations, the merged entity, just for our awareness and the public's awareness, like off the top of your head, um, what will the core service offerings to a locality like ours look like? What will we be?
I don't think it's going to really change. It's just going to go through a different entity. So we have sort of an overall, the ENVERS will control like the finance and all the administrative functions. The advisory board will come and say, hey, this is what this people, these people need and say, okay, how can we develop a program in toward, in order to get what those people need? I mean, our, our, our asks are also, are always, how do we get more training here? Because the answer we always get is, well, you don't have, we'd like a minimum of 10 people. We don't have 10 people. We may have four people.
Okay.
And so maybe that will help. I mean, we're actually a little bit closer to Northern Virginia than Fredericksburg, so maybe that will be an advantage to us.
So training coordination.
Training coordination.
And delivery.
Yeah.
And then grants, I assume.
Grants.
And, and what are, what's, any other highlights?
No, I think those two probably would be the highlights. Um, disaster training, if something should happen, we can use those resources. Um, training for firefighters, training, I mean, it doesn't firefighters, this is not a firefighter grant, training for EMS.
Okay.
Um, I mean, and, and the resources that T-GEM has and REMS have will actually become part of ENVERS, but they will also be, you know, more available like they are now.
Okay.
So that will not really change.
So it's really, um, training and.
Training and funding.
And, and funding just to, to bolster or supplement what we do locally.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Historically, uh, REMS had a voice in the RSAF grants, provided input.
They, they still will.
They were ultimately awarded at the state, right?
Right.
So is that voice now diluted across the big area?
Um, I don't think so. I think that process, from what my understanding is, because that actually did come up in our conversation, it still will go through the advisory committee and the advisory committee will then say, okay, these are the people, I mean, these are the people that applied, but it will just go through ENVERS instead of them. But the same process will apply.
I think that's the most tangible connection that we've had with REMS.
Right, I mean, we put in a grant, right? And then we have to present the grant to the Grant Committee of REMS. I think that's still going to happen. And then the advisory county, council will then go to ENVERS and say, okay, these are the grants that came up in our region, these are the ones that I think need to be moved forward to the state.
Okay.
Thank you. The training I've been seeing right now through Facebook ads is in Gloucester, so I'm really hoping we'll.
You don't live in Gloucester?
Well, you know.
I mean, it's just, it's just really hard because people, people don't want to travel, right? I mean, you know, nobody after work wants to go, you know, two and a half hours or an hour and a half to go to Fredericksburg to go to a training from six o'clock till 10 o'clock at night and then drive home.
Nope.
And we would like to do it locally. And we keep asking for that and they were like, well, you need a minimum of 10 people. We don't have 10 people, we have five. And so hopefully that will help get us the training because we are a small, underserved area, um, and to make this happen. So that's what I'm hoping.
We've actually used some inverse contracts just because they are, um, heavyweight and can negotiate well and we can write on the contract and that will be kind of part of them.
That's the other thing, the other thing with like the drug, they might be able to say, hey, you're part of ENVERS, so we're going to give you a discount because we're part of a bigger entity. So procurement. I mean, right now, when, when Washington did their, um, their drug procurement, I went through the contract through REMS because they offered a discount through a company. So I went through their, their system to get the best price, right? Shared it with everybody. And so this is even a bigger entity, so there's more people, so we might even get a beggar price because there are more people procuring what we need. So that would be the other advantage too, procurement.
Okay. Interesting. Well, thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
And thanks to Mr. Atkins too for continuing to serve in that regard.
So at some point, the board appointed you and Mr. Atkins. You will finish your job as a Board of Director for the REMS Council and there'll be some of their representation.
So what has not been decided is how everybody's going to be represented, right? Cause you can't have 50. Um, so I don't know if it'll go down to one. I, I, they haven't, we haven't really discussed that. We have discussed it as what are we going to do because we can't, because we can't have everybody. And now we have, we're part of, we're going to be a merged entity with T-GEM, so we have all the people from Thomas Jefferson EMS Council too. So how do you get your best representation? And that's probably, probably we're going to be in the January meeting once, once we start making that merger happen.
Whoever's left standing at the end of the meeting.
Yep.
Well, if we can do, I mean, you're a great representative, um, there and if there's anything we can do to.
Well, like I said, first we have to find out what the process is.
Absolutely.
And then once we find the process, we have to find who would be the best representative to, to sit in that spot, to serve in that advisory committee.
What the needs are.
Thanks for doing that.
Thanks, Lisa, I really appreciate it.
Thanks for coming out today also.
Aaron, with you back there, do you have anything to add or?
I had worked with ENVERS for years and the Department of Energy, they have a fantastic organization. Um, building and strengthening that relationship would be very good, you know, would probably open up access to strategic, um, caches for emergencies and disasters. Um, you know, obviously they have, the majority of the area has USC funding available, so they've built quite a, a strong cache of emergency disaster resources. So I think anything that helps strengthen that relationship, I know we use enough for our anti-contract and some other items, they, they've been fantastic.
Wonderful.
Thanks.
All right, thank you, Lisa. Uh, moving into public comment, anyone wishing to speak, please be recognized and come up and give us your name and your districts and I'm going to say five minutes or less, please. Yes, me. Sure.
Good afternoon, I'm Margaret Bond from the Piedmont District. And my comments today are in reference to the ongoing Rappahannock Courthouse plans. I know it's going to be coming up later on in the agenda. As I see it now, we have a dynamic set of architectural plans for a state-of-the-art courthouse and one that could truly be a legacy for this county. Unfortunately, it comes along with a di- dynamite price tag. Dynamite in the sense that a $25 million commitment could blow up the county's budget for capital improvements for years. This county, to my knowledge, has never incurred a debt of such a large proportion to its budget and I'm very concerned about how the county will address the impact of such a, you know, a large commitment and its effects on, two areas are, are particular, but I, you, all of you will have, um, your own particular concerns to add to this. The first one is concern of the impact of this, um, large expense on property taxes. And I'm focusing particularly on the families of the 55% of school-aged children that qualify as low-income for the county's public school lunch assistance program. And with the last Board of Supervisors meeting, Mr. Whitson talked about one of his constituents who came to him and said frankly, you know, didn't think they could afford even as much as a $200 or $300 increase in property taxes. We could also assume that property tax increases would affect renters, many of the low-income houses would be renters, um, because rents will go up with property taxes go up. And the second concern I have, um, is in public safety services. We already know or have discussed many times how, that a complement of volunteer fire and emergency service personnel is strained. We heard it from the fire chief of several boards of, uh, Board of Supervisors meetings ago. This kind of stands out in my mind because it really made an impression on me. The fire chief, um, could foresee a time when we would have, would not have sufficient resources to handle all the fire calls that come in. And he frankly said, your house may burn down. That maybe you want to go home and start increasing my property tax and, or my homeowner's insurance. We also know, thanks to a very pointed presentation from Mr. Whitson, he didn't know I was going to be singling him out here, but the emergency response time in this county is 12 minutes, but that a typical heart attack victim must have help within six minutes or the chances of survival diminish rapidly. So you can do the math from, from there. So along with the discussion of a future courthouse, this county needs to seriously consider the current needs for improving and sustaining our fire rescue services, concerns that affect every resident of this county every day. So you take those two areas, the taxes and the fire rescue services. Clearly, competition among these vital interests need to be resolved before the county commits to a dynamite courthouse plan. So in this context, I propose that this county immediately commit to developing a prudent, multi-year, comprehensive capital budget plan that identifies and prioritizes all of the county's expected needs for at least the next five to 10 years. Then would be, we would be in a much more realistic position to assess the impact of this courthouse project on the county's current budget. Such a capital budget plan should include, as I see it, three components. Identification of the needs, including a capital asset lifecycle for major capital assets, cost to operate, maintain them, and a realistic schedule for renewing and replacing each capital asset. Second, a prioritization of needs based on health and safety considerations and the costs of service and asset preservation. And finally, um, such a plan should include a determination of all the financial impacts for implementing such a capital asset schedule in light of these competing priorities. It's a big job. But with this information, the county would be able to develop a truly comprehensible, comprehensive, excuse me, viable multi-year capital financial plan that would ensure that all our county's expected needs are fully considered and addressed and the true impact of the proposed courthouse expenditure could be assessed. I further propose that this county not commit to a final financial obligation for the current courthouse project until it has completed and published such a comprehensive capital plan. And if the Board of Supervisors would detail a working group to tackle this task, I think it could be completed in six to eight, eight weeks, not too far. In keeping with my personal philosophy of not suggesting a work for somebody else to do without being willing to help with it, I volunteer to be on such a working group. to do without being willing to help with it, I volunteer to be on such a working group. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. You're very kind, Margaret. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret.
Thank you, all sir.
Anyone else?
Peter, from Piedmont. I want to simplify sort of what, I guess, is maybe the whole courthouse thing, and just talk about this proposal to spend $82,000 for another study. I don't think you need to do that, because when you read the actual document itself that we've gotten from Gary, that talks about what, well, it's, we got a copy of it from Gary, it was actually addressed to him. When you read it and put it all together, what they got, what they're actually saying is, we'll make a good guess at it. We got a fictitious site, a fictitious building. On top of that, they have to, they have to admit, they're going to give an appropriate allowance slash contingency for unknown site conditions. Like what? Like hitting rock, which you will do if you're doing a kind of exhumation in Rappahannock County. So essentially, you're paying $82,000 for a guess. It's just delivering to you $82,000 worth of value. I don't believe so. Finally, even if this comes through, and they come up, the clouds part for them, and they come up with a figure, we can save you $10 million by doing this. You know what? It's still got to pass a referendum. I have not heard a great human cry out from the public to move the courthouse out of Little Washington. It's been here since 1833, and I don't see any reason to change that. So I ask you to refuse to pass, I guess this one is a resolution, but to refuse to pass a resolution to spend another $83,000 on a fictitious study. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Peter.
Ron McAlley, Jackson District. The courthouse appears to be the popular subject today, and I'm going to pick the same comments. First, I just wanted to reference the email I'd sent you on the square footage costs, which I found very interesting, and something that I think we need to look at, because $700 a square foot is way out of the range. About 536 dollars a square feet a foot is about where we're at, we should be at. So we need to look at that. And that, and a way to get to that and make things more affordable is look at what we want to build. And what I've come up with here, and this is for small, rural county, a one-story courthouse is likely to be more cost-effective than a multi-story building with the same square footage. Lower upfront costs. Single-story commercial buildings, especially those under 20,000 square feet, and I think we can get it down to 20,000 square feet per floor, generally have lower construction costs due to simpler design, reduced structural complexity, and lower labor expenses. The foundation and the roofing may be a little more expensive because of the larger square footage for those, but you end up with a cost savings because of the structural issues on a two-story building plus elevators and stairways. And that's where we can reduce it also, is that if you go one story, you don't have to have stairways, elevator shafts, that's reducing square footage. Simpler logistics in rural areas. Rural areas often have more available land, making a larger footprint for a single-story building feasible without incurring the high costs associated with urban construction. Operational long-term costs. Reduced maintenance costs. A single-story building often has less complex maintenance requirements. For example, multi-story open spaces like atriums, larger facilities have been reported to increase maintenance and operational costs, and there's challenges with heating, cooling, cleaning, and repairs. Two-story building costs more to maintain. Accessibility and prattability. A single-story design is inherently more accessible for all individuals, including the elderly and those with mobility issues, without the need for expensive installations, installations like elevators and chairlifts, which incur their own operation, or their own maintenance costs. So, and the conclusion on that end is, given the typical characteristics of a small rural county, the simplified construction design and long-term maintenance of a one-story building generally present, present a more effective solution while meeting necessary operational security and accessibility requirements. And the next area is that in our present design, there is no parking. And I've looked around, and I can't find a courthouse anywhere in the state that doesn't have onsite parking. And there are reasons for that. Enhanced security, secure parking garages and lots with monitored entrances and exits that help protect the court personnel and the public from potential threats, guaranteed accessibility. Designated parking garages and lots can ensure all ADA requirements are met, providing accessible spaces on a firm, stable, and level surface near the building entrance. Assured availability. Providing a specific number of spaces in a garage or lot helps meet the parking demands of busy court days, preventing parking-related delays. And this also gives you parking for your jury members, your witnesses, all these folks that have to come in. And we just don't have the parking in town here to handle that. And then, I actually think the $82,000 might be money well spent, because I think we need to relook, relook at this thing. And what we need, what we need out of it is a site plan also. I mean, the whole thing includes all the parking and everything, and I haven't seen that on the recent plans. It's just been the building. And also, I would question in the cost on the building, is that including all of the electronic and technical equipment that's going to be required in that building for the security, and the cameras, and the video screens, and everything else? Because that's, that's a high-dollar item there, and we've got to make sure that's included in the cost. So I think we need to look at it. And my suggestion, and I've talked to a lot of people about this, is that basically, number one, on the one-story building, it's make it a box. And fit everything in the box, and put a shed roof on it, 512 pitch, whatever. It's a cheap building to build, and, you know, you work, you're rooming into the inside. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Anne Yeoman Piedmont. I actually had not planned to say anything at this particular meeting, but given the previous presentation about the business economic development, I'm sure that many people here will remember there used to be a Rappahannock Farmers Association. I don't know quite what's happened to that. They also had a brand. It was Rappahannock Grown, I think, was what the phrase was that they used. So if something like this, that venture initiative goes forward, there actually was something to build on there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Diane Bruce Sperryville. I know you all get tired of hearing to me, but.
Not really.
So many years I worked in here. How can I stay away? Talking about the courthouse, I think the idea of the study, the $83,000 study, is ridiculous. I don't think that you can build a smaller, cheaper courthouse somewhere else. We hear about parking. A new courthouse is not going to generate a whole lot more traffic. Just because we have a big building, we're not going to get dozens and dozens more cars. The cars are going to come when court is in session, or when people come to pay a traffic fine. Eventually, yes, there may be more parking needs. But just to build a new courthouse, we're still going to be serving the exact same number of people. A few years ago, and I think I'm right about this, we bought four acres behind the parking lot back here. Yes, it slants off, but go look at Orange County. They just went in there and flattened it, and put a big parking lot behind their courthouse. And then they have the ground floor and the second floor, and the old courthouse is still there up on the third floor. So I can't imagine going out and buying a piece of property and redesigning all of this. It just doesn't make any sense. We talked about jury trials. So I did a little checking around. I believe in the past two and a half years, we've had seven jury trials here, seven in two and a half years. Loudoun County has had 90 in the last year. Now, you might think that's a lot, but 90 jury trials is not a lot of trials. You have 250 workdays in a year. And if you only have 90 jury trials, that's, and you have 450,000 people in your county. So I think we worry about the size and the parking and all that kind of thing, but it's not going to generate a whole lot more people wandering around here on the streets, at least for a long time. Another thing that I wonder about with the courthouse is how much more stuff is going to become more electronic. I was here one day, and they were, had people zooming and doing like a magisterial sort of thing. It's not even bringing people in here into the courtroom to do the work. They're doing it on that screen over there. So I don't know how much more work there's going to be in the future that's going to be bringing pieces of paper and books and things like that in. I'm just not sure we're going to grow that much and have that much of a need. So I, I think it's silly to do this $82,000 thing. Change the subject. I was looking at the agenda, and for some reason, I started reading the minutes that you are approving tonight, today. And I noticed it takes two months for the minutes to get to you. So what's on your agenda today are the September minutes, I believe. So it's taken two months to get a draft of what happened two months ago. What happened in October? We're not going to know until December. I think that the minutes need to be prepared and produced and put into the agenda monthly. Doesn't take that long to write the minutes. Just get them done and get them in in time. While I was reading those things, I thought, oh, there are a couple of typos in here. So I'm sure you all, before you approve the minutes, the September minutes, you will probably have found these typos. But one of them is in the VDOT report, where they speak of Thornton Gap Church Road. They spelled this wrong. The street sign is Thornton, doesn't have the N in it. This, this area was created by the Thornton's. Now we have a street sign that doesn't spell their name right. It's in the minutes, spelled wrong. We've already lost the FT Valley. That was the Francis Thornton Valley. That's now Fort Valley. And then you get confused with Fort Valley, because that's over in Page County. So let's clean this up. And sorry, I just read the minutes. There's also another mistake in there, a few lines down about deploying, and it should be deploy. There's, on page 11 of your minutes that you're going to approve, they speak of the Little Inn employees. Moving on to another item that's in there is a purchasing agent. Who is the purchasing agent for our county? And as I read about that, I worried about what you're going to sell. And you're talking about selling, my five minutes are up? You're talking about selling things that we don't use anymore. I hope that you don't sell the desk that that lady's sitting at, and there should be two of them around here. You don't sell that table. You don't sell these old chairs. You don't sell these benches.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thanks, Diane.
Thank you, Diane.
Yes, ma'am.
Laura Greggs, speaking Hampton District. When I hear the academic review, and I was thinking about last month, where she was talking about Homecoming, and how everyone had a fabulous time, and we hear about all these projects and things that the kids are doing that make them feel warm and fuzzy. And as a citizen, I would love to hear if the fourth graders are reading at fourth grade level. And I would love to know of the two pages of reports that she sends in to the state of Virginia on a regular basis that all the academic employees, I'm sorry, the administrative employees are turning in, what are those reports about? And why are they important? And what do we get back from the state for turning them in? I mean, it's lovely that the kids had a great time at Homecoming. I know a lot of kids that went to Homecoming when I was in school that didn't have a great time. And I'm pretty sure that there were a few here that didn't either. So I'm not picking on her. I'm just saying, I feel like there could be some real valuable information about what's happening in our school system versus how happy the kids are skipping around the sidewalk. That's just me personally. So I apologize if I've offended anybody. Kind of apologize. And then, our daughter is an attorney who comes here regularly. And she goes to a number of other courthouses. And I had to explain to her what a Sally Door was, which I think is interesting, because she's been practicing law for 10 years in the area. And one of the things that she commented to me about the courthouse is that our judges are fundamentally coming in from areas like Loudoun County and Fauquier County, which have considerably more challenging opportunities than we might have here in Rappahannock with our vast crime sprees that we experience. And so from that standpoint, the courthouse and building such a fabulous building for eight days a month, or whatever the case may be, that we're going to have to pay for, is a little concerning. And the last thing that I'll mention is that this project where they've been going out and talking about this proposed grant that they're working on, they started that in February, and it's November, and they've got to have all their reports in by January. I feel like we're a little bit late to being asked to the dance. Did anybody else, you know, if they don't have commitments at this point from some of the big players, are we finally getting asked? And is it really going to be, like Ms. Smith said, we're not going to get the kind of coverage that we're going to get for the money that we're investing? Would we be better to figure out something else? Or just move on? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John Capielli from the Hampton District. I'm just starting to come out in public again the last couple of days, because my wife passed away recently. So if I get emotional, I'm sorry. I heard something about the EMS taking 17 minutes. They made it to my wife and tried to save her in four minutes. There were two ambulances and 10 people in my bedroom. I already had on staff, that I was paying, a 20-year UVA nurse and a CNA, and she had been sick for two months. They do great work with what they have. 55% of the children in this county have to go to have the county help subsidize, and the state subsidize their lunch. But there are a lot of other people in this county that we, as taxpayers, are subsidizing so they can have their conservation properties, where there, I know one person that has 1,400 acres that they don't pay a dime on in taxes. In fact, when they put it into conversation, or conservation, the state and the county paid them tens of thousands of dollars to not develop it. So when we're looking for money to pay for the schools, it's not those 55% of kids, parents, who are having a struggle. The people that own the 1,400 acres of conservation zone can afford to own it, maintain it. They can afford to pay another penny or two per value. We have some people in this room, and of course, I'm going to get in trouble for bringing it up, but they're against our school budgets. They're constantly looking to shave it. And yet, they send their kids to private schools that cost them $30,000 a year. I'm happy that they're able to do it. But our schools here are, in answer to your question, are.
He's talking about.
Very accredited.
Yeah.
That are very accredited throughout the state and on the government scales for the work that they do with. work that they do with what they have. And that's what a lot of those reports are. They are available at any time. I unfortunately at the moment don't have any kids that are going to school here, but I'm hoping shortly my daughter and her husband and my grandson are going to move to the county to help me continue with my business. He's 10, so he's going to be going to the local school. I know that we don't want to build the county up to be like Prince William or Fairfax or even Warren County. We want to preserve this. I've been here about 10 years or 12 years, and now that my wife is buried here, I've made a commitment to stay here for multiple generations. My family's been in Virginia since the turn of the century, just not here in this particular county. As far as a courthouse is concerned, it, it is not going to be a state-of-the-art building. I spent years building high-end custom homes in Connecticut. We rented in Connecticut. Our cheapest house we ever built was $3 million. Cost per square foot currently is about $250 a square foot. So even if you doubled it to 500 for a commercial building, it's no place near the $700 that's in that report. It seems like you have to sometimes redo engineering time and time again in order to get budgets better because, nothing personal, our local engineer, who I think is great, they'll draw a line on a piece of paper and say, build that. They have no idea of what it takes to build that. So sometimes that line's got to be redrawn. And we can do savings through redrawing some of those lines. So my time is getting short. However, I think I pissed off everybody, so that's okay. There was no commercials.
All right, not seeing anyone else in the courtroom. There are folks on Zoom. Anyone wishing to speak, please raise your Zoom hand and be recognized. All right, not seeing any Zoom hands, I'll go ahead and close public comment.
Madam Chair, I'll, I'll make a motion to, well, what I want to do here is pull the minutes for correction. I have to put Ms. Bruce's comments. But other than that, adopt the consent agenda. As amended.
I'll second with a request for, for modification based on a friendly amendment. I used to spend a ridiculous amount of time proofreading our, our minutes, which do take a lot of work, and they cannot be produced quickly for good reason, because they take a lot of work, because we all blab on, and I'm most guilty of that. So my, I guess my request to you, Van, would be if we had just table the minutes until next month. And I know that that's really going to upset Ms. Bruce because it delays it further, but I don't want to proofread right now. But I will make a commitment to go back to, I don't want to hear about typos, and that's not, I don't want to hear you identifying typos. I should, I should continue doing what I used to do, which is proofread them carefully. And so my commitment to Ms. Bruce and others will be that I will renew that effort on an ongoing basis. But I think we should just table them and then, rather than edit them in front of the public.
That's fine. I will amend my motion.
I think pulling the minutes from the consent agenda
First.
is appropriate.
Yep. So we have a motion and a second to do that.
Okay, understood.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are we going to have any discussion? May I have the discussion?
Absolutely.
Even if it's with myself?
Generally, there's no discussion on the consent agenda. If you want to have discussion on an agenda, I don't pull it out.
It's a, it's a discussion about the motion, which I think we can still have because I was going to request we pull something.
Yes, sure.
And I had not had the opportunity to do so. Is, is that still allowed? I think that it is.
It is.
I would like to pull the county, which one was it? Well, I have to say that the authorized, where's the one about the delinquent taxes? I think we should talk about that. I think there's some wording in that that's problematic.
Subject five.
But I also, I also, I also had some questions about the agreement with Sperryville and why that wasn't just a regular agenda item, so we could discuss that, or why is that on the
So that's two you want to pull?
I guess so.
Okay. All right, so we're pulling number five, which is the delinquent tax.
If there's, if there's simple questions, in the past, we've been able to just answer them and move on. So I, I don't know why it's so different.
They should just be pulled. They should adopt the consent agenda and then take those matters up as they come.
Okay, so we're pulling minutes, number five, county attorney report, and number seven, execute agreement with Sperryville.
So I will amend my motion to reflect that.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All right, let's do them in order, I guess.
I'll make a motion to table the minutes.
Yeah, I'll, let's just take each one.
That's fine.
There are sort of three items now floating around. So on the minutes, I'll just, I'll make the motion that we table them until our next meeting.
And a second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Next one, county attorney report, Ms. Smith.
I had a question on the resolution. There was a word in there that I thought was problematic. The board supervisors direct and request that the county, who I think that the treasurer may mark the delinquent land book accordingly, but I don't think we can tell her that she will do that.
The state code requires you to do that, to certify the report and direct the treasurer to take this action. It's your land book. She just is keeping it for you.
Okay, so even though she's her own elected official, we have to direct her to do that?
That's the way the state code is worded. And then interestingly, it's worded slightly different for the commission of revenue for their work.
Okay, so as long as we're following the guidance that's in place, it seemed like those were different verbs than we usually use with our own elected representatives for those positions. I just wanted to make sure we had the right wording in place for those.
Thank you.
So if there needs to be a motion to adopt that, then I, I will make that motion.
I'll second.
Is this, presumably this sorts out somebody's problem for them? Is that what's going on?
Well, the problem is really Ms. Nix and Ms. Graham's, who have been trying to bill for a parcel that doesn't exist.
Okay, well, there you go.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
That's item five, correct.
That's correct.
Yep.
So roll call vote. Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Comer?
Aye.
Mr. Carney?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
And I also.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Going into number seven, execute agreement with Sperryville.
I, I just, when I looked at the numbers that were attached to that, and maybe it's a habit of mine from negotiating room rental agreements and contracts for a long time. But when I look at the numbers that we are paying for the personnel end of things, of course, that is, is perfectly fine. But I, I did question why we're paying to share space when I think my understanding is that we, we pay the capital expenses, or there's quite a revenue stream to the company already in place?
Ms. Jewell and I had a decent back and forth with Sperryville Rescue on this. We do aim to store our own drugs in our own building at some point in time. But right now, and have our own DEA license, right now we don't have those things, and we rely on Sperryville Rescue for that service. We looked at what the rate maybe should be from a more objective square footage perspective and had some back and forth and landed at 500 because that's what they were asking for and we need this.
And have we checked to see if any other companies would be willing to do this for a lower or reduced price, or no fee at all? I mean, I think we, we spend a lot on fire and rescue, and certainly we get a good return on that investment. But it's, it's tough to see. It's like, you know, you're, you're kind of paying a lot of that bill already, and you want to park a car on the property.
Sure. I think one of the issues is that this would have to be co-located with one of the agencies with whom we share an EMS license. And so that narrows the pool down to only them who hold drugs right now. Between them, Cassett and Flint Hill, they're the only ones that hold drugs. They're licensed to hold drugs.
There's no opportunity to do it elsewhere for a reduced rate?
Well, if they, if somewhere else would like to collapse under the county's EMS license, then absolutely, but the others have not been interested in doing that yet.
That's unfortunate that we don't have more opportunities or that we're not able to take advantage of the space at a lower cost.
I mean, we did, you know, the, the five initiatives that we put out as offers to all the volunteer companies included the idea of centralizing drug management and, you know, we heard from Ms. Palmer, she's done the hard work of managing that directly for, for Company One. And I, I think another company, Company Three, probably is capable, but they're not under our EMS license. So we're just dealing with sort of this kind of in-between set of circumstances where we have county obligations.
Well, how much does it cost us to take it back as a county and just do it ourselves?
Well, we need a place to store the drugs that meets all the security requirements. And then the license, I think, is cheaper.
And this is interim until we have our own facility.
I just, I just hope we resolve it quickly and don't just start spending $6,000 a year on storing some pills in Sperryville or supplies. I don't mean to belittle it. It's an important aspect of, of the solution that's in place. But if we can solve it ourselves in-house for a couple thousand dollars, which is what it sounds like, am I wrong?
Yeah, we don't have, this, we intend to build a building at some point in time that would have this function.
The idea is, if we put it in place, they would all move to, to centralize. It was really a space issue. We currently do not have physical space on the county property to, to like this on.
On this county property, we don't have space to do this.
We have a building envisioned. I wonder whether we have the budget to actually build the building. We, and we haven't started that building yet, and we've talked about it a number of months as part of the construction.
That's the garage with the drug space on one side for ALS 1400.
I do know, working with
I've got it.
Sperryville has been successful to date, and they've been very accommodating to the other companies that are under the same license going in and getting the drugs. And I don't want to assume, but if three or four companies with 1400 being a part of it are getting it out of the same location, there's a cost savings because we're not all buying epi pens and we're not all buying other meds.
I, I do agree, ma'am. I think that there's some savings involved in not just pharmaceuticals, but supplies. Centralizing that, a lot of the medications and a lot of the equipment we use, we have to purchase in minimums. And we're finding that even, you know, we have some waste at the end of the season or at the end of the year because of expiration dates, and we're stocking four ambulances and a quick response vehicle. So for a smaller agency that may only have a few vehicles, that, you know, they may experience the same, it's, it's difficult to keep up with. Well, we could probably identify space here, you know, it, it's not a large area. The, probably the bigger challenge was with, with this other building on the horizon, we didn't want to invest all the money into hardening it
Yeah.
in terms of infrastructure and security and those types of things.
So what companies will be drawing from these stocks that'll be held in Sperryville? Be ALS 1400, four, five, and seven itself, correct?
Correct. So we've consolidated four, four organizations with a great deal, Martin was here, I'm sorry, he's left, but with a great deal of their support.
And nine, nine falls under a different protocol, correct? Because of their physical location at Chester Gap?
Correct.
But there may come a point in the future where nine would fall under that same consolidated management?
Our door is open. Anyone, any, for anyone.
But it, it is, it's killing four birds with one stone, it sounds like.
Yeah. I, I said, I, the, the savings, I would venture to guess, offset the cost annually. But I certainly recognize your, your concerns.
And if those individual companies were managing their drugs themselves, then presumably there'd be some operating costs associated with their management of those drugs, which would be reimbursed to those companies through the Fire Lovey funds anyway, correct?
It's, it's probably a combination. The, the initial equipment purchase, we ran through opioid abatement funding that was available.
Okay.
Anything that dealt with security of narcotics. We've done that for all the organizations within the county. Volunteer hours, I mean, each of them are carrying volunteer hours, which aren't reimbursable. But we are carrying a great deal of that burden for that organization through career staff, whether they are working during their shift, they're able to, to do a lot of the management in, in regards to both medications and their supply room or inventory.
So this maintains, this maintains, I think, the integrity, integrity of a standalone, non-stop corporation, which I assume is how Sperryville Rescue is, is organized. But in any event, it's a corporation. This is a, this is an arms-length, square-foot-based lease, which is, the burden of which is spread across arguably four different companies.
Yes.
Where the county, in any event, because those companies such as four and five and are operating under our EMS license, we are managing those drugs, which is something that we unanimously agreed was something we wanted to offer to those companies. And this is the way that we're doing it in the interim, correct?
Correct.
For $500.
And this extends a little more into the majority of supplies as well.
Okay.
Bonnie and I haven't talked about this. There might be an avenue to fund some or all of this with opioid abatement fund dollars.
That would really be the way to go and to get a long-term solution in place.
Something we can look into, as long as we don't get in trouble.
Right.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Thank you.
Thank you, Darren.
Thank you, Darren.
Thank you.
Well, I worked out.
I'm just like a flushed-out agenda item. I didn't mean to, you know, hurt anybody's feelings or prolong the agony.
But you're allowed to pull them.
But I'm just used to something like this being a standalone agenda item as new business so that all of this information would be on the record. And I appreciate you indulging me.
It raises a lot of, a lot of interesting questions, which the key one to me is that for efficiency and reduce costs and mitigating waste and throwing stuff away, this is the interim solution for the centralized drug management program.
And while I understand that and don't necessarily disagree with those positive aspects of it, the other end of the spectrum is we're already covering all the capital costs, basically, of the, of the fire and rescue. So if, if we're basically helping you pay all of your bills for then you to turn around and charge us rent, seems like maybe
Yeah, we're
an odd situation.
Well, we're covering, we're not covering capital costs, we're covering operating costs.
Well, we're covering, you know, $100,000 a year in, in, and I know some companies, and plus, you know, helping with staffing, it's a lot of money going out. And, and to then, you know, have a rent for some storage, you know, requested, I understand it, but at the same time, it's hard to explain.
Right. So not to keep
We still need a motion if we're going to
Yeah, just, okay, go ahead, someone. And then I have just one question.
Are we still on item seven?
Item seven.
Item seven, sorry.
We need to pass that, so, did you? So we haven't passed that?
There's no motion. There's no motion on the table.
No motion.
Well, I'll make a motion to, well, let's see, authorize county administrator to execute a clarifying agreement with SVRS for the cost sharing of staffing and lease for secure storage space.
The main impetus for this was to document very clearly the staff resource
Yeah.
investment that the board had made. And Sperryville had crept up and used more, and with the turnover of staff there, they didn't realize that they were paying for the more. And so we said, how about we make sure this is super clear in the, in an agreement so that nobody's confused going forward.
So on the staffing, they now understand clearly that
And then as part of that, we get into the conversation about the drugs, and we said, how about we put it all in one agreement so nobody's confused about any of this?
I'll second the motion and
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I guess my question, and Christine raises some really good points. Are we not, I stated before I should have been I stated before I should have been in discussion, I stated the, the concept that I like the arms-length nature of this, but at the same time, it raises a question of, are we just, are we just exchanging money back and forth? And I, to that point, I guess a question, which is part of my discussion, is, did, you know, in trying to clarify the, the paid staffing language and then raising this separate question about drug storage, was this a request for revenue from company seven, or was this an offer from county staff to provide revenue for drug storage? Who, who's driving this fire truck?
This was, we sent company seven a bill for $18,000, I think, and they said, what?
Okay.
And we said, this is the agreement.
Yeah.
And they said, yeah, but we do all this stuff free for you, and it costs us so much? And I, and I said, if you think there's value there, then put it in the, put it on paper and tell me why.
What do they, okay, so let's put some meat on the bones, or what, what in, from, it's a great company and an awesome team there, so don't misconstrue my questions as criticism, but what are, what is all this stuff that they do for us for free that should now be recovered, monetized, et cetera?
They have the license, and they have the secure storage room that is licensed to hold the, all of the drugs, to include the opiates
Okay.
which are highly controlled now and require the new license. And so with that, out that, we're dead in the water.
Okay. And so, again, their infrastructure that's already in place in a time when we're still trying to sort out what we're gonna do with the, call it the, the vehicle bays with the drug storage on the side, and I know that you've worked with an architect and you've got plans, and we'd build it back here somewhere, and so, setting that aside, we're definitely in an in-between place right now, and we need a solution. But the solution also comes with doing this for companies four and five, so it's ALS four and five. And we increasingly talk about having a system. Why does, why is this $6,000 a year or something that Sperryville wants to pull into their coffers at the cost, to the cost of the county and arguably indirectly the cost of other companies? I mean, basically, is Sperryville extracting a small amount of revenue from us and by association to other volunteer companies?
And to paraphrase what we were told by Chief Woodard, they invested a significant amount of time to make all this work, they, as their volunteer crew. And between that and the physical space and the work to get the license, they requested this.
It started back when Chief Summers was here.
We didn't, we didn't pay them money for the
No, no, I'm just saying, their offer to help at that point started with Chief Summers. I mean, technically, if you wanted to spread the, the expense, you could have one and, I mean, four and five pay a hundred bucks a month, but they're gonna put that in their fire levy and get the money back.
Right, and we
At the end of the day, the county's still in the hunt.
Well, and, and where I come down on this, I'm just trying to, yeah, I mean, because it's, it's a super interesting question, just
I'm so sorry.
No, don't, don't apologize, I mean, it's a really good question, and I'm glad that we're talking about $500 a month instead of $24 million over 30 years, so that's a relief. So if only all our problems could be solved with $500 a month. But, yeah, so we, I think where I end up on this, and I was part of this from the Public Safety Committee, and then we were all part of it unanimously from here, is we, we offered, and certain companies took us up on the offer to manage their drugs with all the new protocols. So we're, we, we did that in part to take pressure off of individual companies and their volunteers, so their volunteers can run calls and focus on what they want to do, which is save lives, which is great. So if the cost of that commitment to all of our companies, regardless of whether they signed up to work with us or not, for the time being is $500 a month, while we figure out our centralized facility and plan, then I think I'm fine with this. Because it's, it's all EMS money in the end, and we're, we're at like two and a half million dollars and only going up, so.
It would be good to pull it back in-house as soon as possible, though, so we're charting our own course on this.
Yeah, I agree.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, and I think build
All right, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Well, that was easy.
Thank you. All right, old business, regional fiber. Ms. Smith?
Oh, I just asked for this as a standing agenda item while the project is rolling out. I think it's a good touchstone every month for people to talk about if things are going well, if things are going poorly, what's on their mind. I mean, I was very interested to see this past month that there's another delay in Loudoun County. They announced an eight-month delay in Loudoun County, so I think this is, this is not their first delay in Loudoun, so it seems to be, you know, something that we should look at and expect for the future. The other things are, is the broadband authority going to meet this year? And is it a possibility to claw back the interest which is out there? And then the other things, which I think are still outlining details, which we never received feedback from All Points Broadband, is as we do experience delays and issues with this installation, will people in the county be able to get a discount as other counties are being able to receive? And also, do we have information about what the installation will look like? They never, as far as I can remember, did they send us the design details? Because the installation, what the installation looks like, I think, will be very interesting to people as well. Those are my, those are my outlining details, and they have been for quite some time.
Thank you for keeping us up to date, anybody?
Well, I should, I'm just thrilled to see them in, on my district. I was made aware of it when they were immediately on the ground. Mr. Innes has been in touch with me over the past couple of months. I'm just thrilled that they're making progress. I have been in touch with constituents who are asking me questions. My energy is going to go towards clarifying what's happening right now and what we can expect moving forward and facilitating this process. I think that communication from them to us, from them to the community, both of those directions, needs to, I want to get a handle on that. So that, you know, for instance, they've lowered the initial rate from 199 to $99, how can we get that out there? That's a great thing for our constituents. So I'm hopeful, given that they are in our area and that they're, they're working, I just want to make sure that this process flows and we can get as many people hooked up as quickly as possible. So, Mr. Curry, have you had information from them regarding communication?
Well, I'm aware that they put hang tags in areas that are seeing work. I have asked them for more extensive view into what their plans are, and offered that I'd sign an NDA, which I have done with Comcast in the past. And they suggested they'd be willing to do that, but haven't done it yet.
Okay. Kind of a bigger picture, bigger picture plan, instead of saying, we see a crew on Castle and View Road and
I do get copied every day on their work tickets for the day. So I can see where crews are going to be. But ultimately, this is their infrastructure that they're installing, it's not going to be, or isn't now and never will be county fiber. And so they're a little protective of sharing their plan for their pro, their materials installed under their permits that will serve their customers, even though the state and the county are making, will make heavy investments to make it viable.
So what I would like to do is get a plan from them about how they want to outlay, and this is, shouldn't be proprietary, their communication with, 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 with buying customers, so, yeah.
Their message is, they will contact customers approximately 90 days before fiber is available for, to serve them.
Okay, so is, are, are they gonna be, I want them to be in touch with you or somebody at the county level that you can then disseminate to us about when they're gonna start doing that in one district?
Sure, and I expect that that will happen.
Okay. In terms of that, I do think that, this is now, my memory is being strained because, well, all this communication discussion happened years ago.
Yes.
But I do remember them talking about a communication sort of blitz and lots of stuff, emails, postcards, these kinds of things. I just think it's gonna be really important to stay on top of that kind of thing. I don't know if you all are aware, but it does not look like Jimmy Carr is the CEO of All Points Broadband anymore.
Heard that.
He's, I think he's the chair of the board.
There, there's a new CEO, and I, you know, it happens maybe that they have a different, I don't know, different, different leadership now, so I'm just hopeful that they can get this done rather quickly. And they, so this December thing, when they said that they're gonna start having people hooked up in, in at least Castleton in December, which is beyond this.
Yeah, so the, the active cabinet is in place, I don't know that it's full of electronics, or they may not have fiber to it. From that cabinet, they will serve the fiber service area two
Right.
which is that broader Castleton area.
That cabinet, I think, is complete. I went and looked at it, and it's lacking, or at least last week when I looked at it, it was lacking a meter.
Right, right.
Which is, I think, something an REC has to do. I, you know, just to dovetail with or on what Van just said, one, there, yeah, I want clarification is more along the lines of where Gary has been going in his back and forth with Tom Innes at All Points. I went down there where, when they started digging on Castleton View Road, and I talked to the crew just to get it directly from them in terms of what they're accomplishing per day. And it depends on whether they're plowing, which is what, what goes most quickly versus boring, directional boring, which is when you get into rock, and they were doing a lot of plowing and they're moving pretty quickly. So I talked to the crew, then I talked to Mr. Innes, and then I posed the question about total miles that they're going to have to install across the county, total number of fiber service areas. And I would like clarification on that because it sounds like, it, it sounds like from our last discussion, direct discussion with Mr. Innes when we were here back in, I think, February, and we held his feet to the fire on having this project done by the end of 2026, I thought we were operating on the assumption of before drops to homes, the assumption was around 180 to 200 miles. That was the number I always had in my mind, okay? So keep that number in your minds, 180 miles. So the crew, the first crew, and there are now multiple crews on the ground in Rappahanna County, the crew I talked to said they were moving initially at about a half a mile per day pace. Okay? So one crew, best, best conditions, good weather this time of year, more plowing than directional boring, okay? That's two and a half miles per week, 10 miles per month, and you think, all right, multiple crews, 10 miles per month, you can accomplish the 200 miles, not quickly, but ostensibly before the end of 2026, which is, I think, where we'd kind of drawn the line, said, you know, it's gotta be done. All that said, when I talked to Mr. Innes, I got a mileage count that was lower than 200 miles, which is hard for me to wrap my head around, especially when you, when you're starting in Castleton, which is unbelievably challenging in terms of the roads and the terrain and everything. And so I think we need to, Van's right, we want to understand from a consumer perspective, how are people going to be notified, what are they gonna be told, and when are they gonna be able to hook up? But then Mr. Curry's line of inquiry is, what's the big plan here? I think we need to nail down total miles, like exactly how many miles excluding drops to people's homes, how many crews, miles per week, and we have to do the math so that we can look our constituents in their collective eye and say, it will be done on Rappahanna County as it is in heaven before the end of 2026. So we need, we need those bottom lines now that they're operating and now that we have a sense of how quickly they move. And I will say that one of the crew members said how glad they were that they're finally here working, and
That's good.
he didn't know that I'm a board member or anything, I was just a guy. I said I was Van Carney and This is my district.
My, my concern really is, is that, like, I just want the, I just want the, I just want our citizens to take advantage of that $99 thing.
Yeah.
They can get the project done by 2026 and not have communicated this to anybody and then hook up everybody in the next six years, but they're not gonna be able to take advantage of that $99 thing. So I just really want that communication to be very clear. There, I, so I, I think that, since the project, I'm just worried about the, the people that could get that $99 thing and now that turns into a $1,400 thing.
There is shared interest, because All Points gets revenue when they hook up a customer and start charging them monthly, so that's good. So they have an in, in, interest to do that. The mileage, overall mileage thing is what I was getting at, and if you recall, they, All Points went back to the state and renegotiated with the state, kept the same amount of money, reduced the number of addresses, and then won back the difference in money in BEAD, which is provisional at this point in time. So the entire county is not served by body. I, I do not know what portion is.
Well, we better get that sorted out.
We'll have it till about the middle of December, probably, BEAD will be announced.
Yeah, I think that's what I've read.
That's what I've heard, too.
So if the provisional award is finalized, then All Points has the vast majority of the rest of the county, another like $10 million, if I recall correctly. So
That is nice.
That, to me, the original project, I think, was nine and a half million in Rappahanna County. That, to me, tells me maybe it's half, but I, I don't know that answer. And it's all mixed in with all eight counties, and I don't have a clear line of sight to what that is, and I've asked a number of times and haven't received that, that's why I've asked and said, well, tell me in a super secret way, so I at least can know.
And the BEAD funding does not have any link to the ARPA dollars December 2026?
No, that's totally different.
So those addresses can go beyond that.
But I also do want to give a, a real, a public thanks to VDOT and REC who are, who APP, they're working with them, and they have, at least Mr. Innes has expressed his gratitude with their, their facilitation of this process.
And I ran into him, I was at Food Lion, and I gave him a big hug, and I said, thank you for approving nine miles of land use permits.
And there, there are many multiples of that nine miles now are approved.
Good.
Hugged him at Food Lion.
I hugged him at Food Lion.
I did speak with
Which was awkward, but
I did speak with the chairman of Hanover County Board, who is a portion of Hanover is All Points, and he said, yes, it's taking longer than anybody would like, but at that time, he had 260 hookups and 259 were happy, the one hookup that didn't occur was hooked up multiple days later. So now he's got 260 people that are happy with having fiber to their home. And that's really what I heard from Loudoun and other counties, it's once people get hooked up, they're really happy with it. I did see Chandler Vaughn, who, I don't know if he's still with the
He was with DCD, he's not, I don't know.
He's now with the Office of Broadband, and he, I said, you know, we're concerned about the December 2026 deadline, and he said, looking at your project, I'm not worried about Rappahannock County, and I went, okay. So I hope he is accurate, and I'm just happy that we're seeing action. I did say something to Gary about trying to get Tom and the new CEO here. My guess is that'll Um, my guess is that'll be January, but, um, I think it would be nice to meet the new CEO and and give Tom a hard time again because he gets it everywhere he goes, I think.
Yeah, but I think.
It's his job. Yep.
Yeah.
I think that's an excellent idea. I think we should ask them to be here.
Yep.
And you you learned that, did you speak with, uh, the Hanover guy at when you attended the governor's summit? Is that?
Yeah, and he said, call him anytime, I'm happy to help. He said he thought we had made the right decision to stick with All Points. Um, so that was comforting. And, um, so if we have any questions that I can ask him that Hanover's been through that we haven't, happy to do so.
Um, the only other thing I was, um, I some information I gathered both from a constituent and then also just talking with some other folks is that, including Mr. Innes, there there are some projects that are winding down, fiber projects. So these some contractors that like the ones we've seen down in your neck of the woods. Um, there are crews that are hungry for work. And so to the extent that V dot doesn't bottleneck the process and they're getting enough permits approved, then, uh, labor should not be a limiting factor on progress, it sounds like. So there are a lot of people available and you see them everywhere, right? Putting conduit in and.
Yep.
And then the last thing I'll say is I said to Mr. Innes that beautiful Rappahannock County, Virginia and its citizens cannot tolerate a million of these orange and white posts everywhere, um, alongside the road. And I was pleased to see that, at least for now, they're installing green sort of, I don't know, they're Yuma green, but.
Spice spice box.
Yeah.
Spice boxes.
Splice boxes that are reasonably not ugly instead of the white and orange things. Um, and I think that is important.
It is.
Because we'll take infrastructure, but we don't want it to look terrible. And I think Mr. Curry noted that at least the subs that he observes, they're doing a pretty neat and tidy job, um, so far in terms of excavation, so that's good.
Awesome. All right, moving into the next agenda item, which is the courthouse project, continued discussion.
Motion.
I would just like to say, for me personally, been hearing from folks for years now. Um, the July minutes, we basically said it was time to get the outside public involved and do the, um, posts and hopefully the Rack Theater has some timing that we can all get together, um, on one date. I did mention to Mr. Curry that I would like, um, to set a date that's before the end of the year, but hopefully before the weather changes. Um, so if we agree that this is good timing to go ahead and set that date, um, I would definitely put that forward to the board. Um, hopefully, I think, giving everybody at least a month notice, doing it now, doing, um, the actual meet and greet outside in early December with hopefully the theater, um, playing a part. I would definitely support that at this point.
Is that a motion?
We didn't have a motion before, so I don't know if we need a motion.
Okay.
It was just a statement in the minutes.
Well, I support that, I agree. I I don't think that we should move forward on this quote. Um, I think it's misspent money, so I'd be, well, yeah, I'm I'm totally in favor of doing that. That's that's part of the current project, um, that's the last piece that they're required to. So, um, yeah, I don't see a need to pursue, uh, the taking the courthouse out of the county.
But you didn't, what you just said had nothing to do with that. It's interesting that you added on to what she said. It's like you took her non-motion and turned it into a decision on what we haven't talked about yet.
We haven't discussed the.
She's she's talking about just a like a public, public event.
Right, I know, and I'm talking about what I.
Shouldn't we, shouldn't we decide on that first or?
Um, isn't this this agenda item, right?
It's just a kind of an open.
But there's no, there's no action to to take on either thing, so we don't need to take action, right?
I don't think.
No, you don't need to take action.
I'm just, I'm opining on both things, which is that I don't, I think we should have this meeting.
That was my question.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we don't, we need to take action on, but I'm also saying that in terms of the quote we got from them, I I'm just, I'm trying to take up my time as my turn to talk, saying everything and then just go to the line.
Got it, okay, I just.
And I agree, I I should have added that in there, I don't think we need to spend the eighty two thousand.
Well, listen, the 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 challenge of this project is that it's complicated, right? So that's why we're all sort of crossing signals. Um, I think early December is a terrible time to do this. I don't know about everybody else, but I am not a social person and my weekends in December are booked because of holiday obligations. So I cannot imagine what a social person's calendar looks like. Um, but I I don't have free weekends in December, I'm busy. And I think most people feel the same way, the weather is likely to be lousy. Um, I also believe that the current vision for the courthouse at the twenty four million dollar price tag is simply too ambitious a project and will not succeed. And I don't know why we'd go forward with an event to pro to have a project pitched to the public that I don't believe will succeed. Um, I would rather wait until we had some iteration of a project that had a chance of success that would, um, maybe generate some positive comments from the public. I don't believe what we have currently will do that. Um, you stick around these meetings long enough, you're gonna hear everything. I guess today I would say I I largely agree with Ron Makala, not to the extent which he went, which, you know, just put a shed roof on it and call it good. But I I I think we need to simplify this building dramatically to reduce the cost of this building. And, um, I've I've detailed the ways to do that in the last meeting. Um, I I get the impression that I heard people say in that exact meeting, I don't see a big difference between sixteen million dollars and twenty four million dollars. And the difference is eight million dollars, which is a third of the cost of the project as it as it is proposed, which I I believe when this finally comes to fruition, it will far exceed what is currently proposed due to the many challenges ahead of this project. Um, not the least of which is making its way through the, uh, A P B or the 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 building, uh, committee for the town of Washington. It's gonna be tough going and we need to cut costs when we can and now's the time to do that. Um, y'all know how I feel about that plaza and the front of the building and these are things we should be simplifying. We're a simple rural community and our forebears who designed this building made design decisions that were simple, like the faux columns on the front, because we are a small rural county and we have to cut costs when we can. It isn't that we wouldn't like to have those fancy things, but we have one major revenue stream. And there's no way we're gonna ask for a ten to fifteen percent tax increase to finance our courthouse. It's not going to happen, people aren't going to bear it. So so what are we gonna do? Now we see why this is always a complex project and what the challenges are. Y'all heard my pitch last month? Simplify the building dramatically, try to get it to one story, reduce it back to one courthouse, work out your three entrances, one for your judge, was it secure with a yard with privacy screening? One for your inmates, was it secure with a yard with privacy screening? Have a separate way for your jurors to get in. Only move Ms. Foster's office in there. Work with Ms. Caitlin and her, Ms. Caitlin Struckman in her current space if she needs additional space. But keep it simple. Devote the front of the building to checkout and security needs, just like other courthouses that I've been in. Have your common areas address it and then have your courthouse with your separate entrances, your separate waiting area for the jurors, a s- a few small spaces for judges and or lawyers and clients to meet, a a place for the jury to meet, a place for the, uh, folks on trial to sit or the inmates to sit and a a a a room for the judge. Simple. Keep it simple. That's what folks will bear. People want a secure courthouse, but all the bells and whistles that are in this current iteration are are not going to go well. And now is our opportunity to do it. I don't like being so blunt, but I've been with this project for years. I've been with it since it was in the building committee, which, by the way, was disman- disbanded two years ago, the beginning of October. Two years ago. And we've thrown two hundred thousand dollars at the problem and not accomplished a whole lot. So what are we gonna do? I I think this is our time to take the bull by the horns, make these changes. And and if you're gonna have a tough pill to swallow, at least make it clear to folks that you have done everything you can to defray the cost of what you're getting ready to do. And, um, I'll continue to make this plea for as long as you all will continue to indulge me to hear it. Uh, in a few months, I'll only have five minutes to make my plea. And, um, I appreciate you all very much and, um, I've said it before and I'll say it again, as someone who has a cousin who works in juvenile justice and works in a locality that had a shooting at their courthouse. We want everyone to be safe, we want the victims to be safe, we want jurors to be safe, the employee, the court employees to be safe and judges. We don't want anything bad to happen in this courthouse. But we also have a responsibility as elected officials to people that put us in these chairs to value their tax dollars and not ask them for any more than we need. And I appreciate your time on this and and, uh, you all know I'm a tedious individual and I will always be willing to come to the table to work on this project, um, whenever you should need me. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to move forward with a meeting. Um, I one hundred percent agree with Ms. Smith. It's a horrible time when, um, the very first time I ever met met with Ms. Smith, it was in November and I remember very clearly she said, um, before things get wonderfully hectic. And she is corrected, is gonna be very, very crazy. However, it's never a good time. Like before it was vacations, um, then it was school is starting. And then, you know, January and February, you've got the ice and the snow and it's dark and a good number of our residents are elderly and they might not want to come out after dark. Like, it is never a good time. So I I'm I'm ready just to, I I want to hear from from as many people as we can and I think doing that, um, I think it's time, it's past time, really. Um, as far as spending money on another, uh, study, I to at our last meeting, I said I wanted to be sure that, um, we had not missed anything, that we no rock had been left unturned. However, I it's, this is costing us three percent every year we wait. Ms. Smith just pointed out, it's been two years since the the disbandment of the the building committee. So that's six percent, so, you know, it's six percent. Construction costs, uh, go up an average of three percent every year. Um, lastly, I I again, I agree, I'm I'm looking at the places where, um, where we agree rather than where we disagree. I agree, the front of this building is modest, the faux, um, columns, they they actually speak about that in some history written of this courthouse, um, the plaza, one hundred percent agree. I love the grass here is prettier than I've, every time I come here, I'm like, how did they get that grass that green? I want that grass in my yard. Change orders will be a lot cheaper than, uh, uh, as Mr. Luke said, a high dollar guess. We can, we can change an order. Should this go forward, we can change, no building, no, nobody starts something and do it exactly like they predicted they were to do it. There's always gonna be a change order. Um, so, you know, that, those are my two cents at at the the moment. I I really would like to pick a date, blast it out there, make sure everyone knows that it's out there, um, and and hear from folks. That's where my brain is today.
So even if we were to do this meeting, we would have to ask them when they're available. And it is likely that they won't be though after the new year. I mean, it's just, I, who knows, right? I mean, to Ms. Smith's point, it is a very busy time of the year. But, you know, in terms of finalizing something, I mean, this is just part of the project that we're already on the, that that they already owe us. And so in my mind, what we're just committing to here is just at least having a, the, giving the public an opportunity to come and say, do not do this, we'll we'll break you over the coals or, hey, why don't you? So in my mind, we're just at that pro- that stage of just having an open public meeting with them coming to do the last thing they're contractually obligated to do for us. So that's how I'm thinking about this. And, you know, if it if it's, I I know and I agree that it is incredibly busy during December. So if it doesn't work out and, uh, I mean, I'm I'm only saying that that if it's after the new year and I'm not here, I still am in favor of having that meeting as the next step. That's all I'm saying, uh, I just support that. I also think, and I brought this up many times, that the, what they gave us, number two, I do think you can get it down to eighteen million dollars, well, just a little above eighteen million dollars, if you start axing a few of the things that we have talked about. I think it's a start. And I think that that, at once we have the public come and say, hey, like, you know, I ju- I just feel like that's the next logical progression here, so that is where I'm coming from. I also just want to say, I really appreciate every single one of you and that we we, no, I'm being for real.
We're trauma bonded.
Uh, yeah, exactly. I mean, this is an intense process that, you know, for our little county has been a struggle and we've had lots of long, intense meetings and I just, you know, I I just, I do appreciate the all the work that you guys have put in and, you know, Ms. Smith, you and I are, not that we have senioritis here, but we have one more meeting after this.
It's our penultimate meeting.
Yeah, I know, it is our penultimate meeting, that is true.
Have to get in that word of the day.
I guess you do, I've I've said it to my wife. Um, but I I I do and it's, you know, we have disagreements and, uh, I just, I think it's, honestly, I think, and I think we've had disagreements, uh, civilly, and I think it's really good for the public to see that. Um, because I think if it were just a shoe in, hey, this can happen in two months, that could be a tricky process. This is gonna be expensive any way that it cuts and so at least we're struggling to get there. And I always think that that's a good thing. I think having some tension on a board is a good thing, so thank you all.
Thank you.
Can I just have one minute?
Sure.
Um, I've obviously been close to the project. I've been thinking of big swings that the board could take to try to lower the cost. The, um, concept provided by Wally Wilson had one floor sunken and one floor exposed. And you could do that with this current concept. You could invert the floor plan, put the second floor underground mostly, daylighted in the rear and have one floor above ground, have essentially no basement. And the floor plan had to grow a little bit in area to accommodate those things that are already in the partial basement.
Mechanical.
So you would have courtrooms without windows, which is not impossible. I mean, the the courthouse that I was had last, the courthouse, courtrooms were stacked up in the middle of the building, none of them had windows. No, it's not a, you know, a clerk would be on the upper floor. Um, so there, you could make a big change like that and keep the layout very similar.
Do you think there'd be cost savings in that or you just?
Sure, yeah, I mean, it, well, definitely from, if you look at the current estimate, there was that nine hundred seventy three thousand dollar add to fully do a shell basement. Um, you you would s- take that, but then you would, and then you'd have to build it out, but then you would avoid two floors above ground. You'd have only one floor above ground and it would have to grow a little bit. I'm I'm confident that would shape cost. But I think it would have to be done in a very smart way. Um, we would have to, um, make sure mechanical space or sacrificial space is positioned along those basement walls. They will leak eventually, however many years, you know, if there's a hundred year building. So you don't put finished space against those walls, you have mechanical space against those walls. Uh, so you sacrifice a little bit of space, but I think you could, if you wanted to make a big swing at it, you could probably do that. And it would, looking at it from the street, it would just be shorter. You would not have any extra space growth into the future like you would with a unfinished basement that could accommodate. Whatever growth comes in this community, 75 years, 100 years into the future. When a clerk has to. When a combined clerk is split into to be J and D R clerk and general district clerk. You you have a lot of flexibility if you have a a shell basement, which you would lose. You'd have to somehow add horizontally.
This building didn't have a lot of flexibility and it all worked out okay.
Well, we just kept building buildings next to it.
Yeah, which we do have four acres in the back too.
Sure. So that's. My half assume.
Yeah, I'll be quick. So I appreciate Ms. Smith's comment about the dissolution of the citizen building committee. I've said it before, I just want to. Say it again in response that the Wiley Wilson concept. Didn't land well. So I agree with you that $24 million on the current plan. Probably isn't, well, it already isn't landing well, but at least the way that design came out was a problem and so. It was a problem in terms of general public acceptance that I think people didn't like it. Like, why are we building a box? Behind courthouse rows. So that's kind of, that was the impetus, I think, for. For revisiting and unfortunately spending more money to come up with something that. People would like. So I think we've come a long way in that regard. I still believe that. The Glavian Homes. Design looks good and I think it it makes sense and. I'm willing to state that despite my. At least. Suggestion that maybe we need to look outside the town at an easier building site. I'm I'm of I'm I have been and remain of the mind that ideally the courthouse should remain in the town. I appreciate Mr. Luke's concept about fictional. Fictional lot, so I'll I'll present some nonfiction. You might have seen that the Town of Washington Planning Commission. Recently met with respect to the second phase of the Rush River Project. And you'll all remember perhaps somewhat painfully. This boundary line adjustment agreement into which we entered with the town included the provision that. There were to be no more houses built on that corner. Mainly because the the zoning of that corner from a county perspective. Was commercial, it was a commercial zone property and so at least I I took the position that we shouldn't. By allowing that annexation, not allow the town to then do what they wanted with it, including additional housing. Not to mention, it was my view that that was too much housing density in one. One small area right in the center of the county and certainly many people agree with me and many people disagree, but that's. Where the agreement turned out. So I found it pretty remarkable and. Unsettling that the planning commission of the Town of Washington. Told the developer, we don't like your proposal for phase two of Rush River. Of Rush River Commons and we don't want another office building. And hey, maybe maybe we should revisit the boundary line adjustment agreement. And just build more affordable housing on the corner and. That ship has sailed, that water is under the bridge, use whatever metaphor you want. But to make, to put a finer point of Mr. Luke's comment. I think for me, that's like nonfiction. There's a lot there. The developer can't get agreement from the town. On what should go there. We've already said there are no more houses to go there. It's, I believe, a flat lot. I know it has. It has challenges in terms of. Water and in the soil and. People have always said it's a swamp. I don't know if that's the case or not, but. It is in the town because of our agreement. It is flat. Presumably there'd be room for parking and ostensibly there would be room to build, build a. One story courthouse with the potential for or potential and room for expansion over the years as needed. I recognize there would be a land acquisition cost on the front end, but. That land cost and then a reconfigured building. A more simple building on a flat lot is precisely why I was asking for this Glavian Homes quote. So take my theoretical, my fictional, my imagined, my let's, you know. Let's throw this all back up in the air and figure out what our best path is. I'm just saying that Rush River two is now in question. The town government doesn't want. An office building there. They want the courthouse in town. And we want to simplify and potentially do something, maybe one story, one courtroom, whatever. But recognizing that needs might change over time, where would we have the space to configure a building? That was designed in such a way to allow for future expansion horizontally. Maybe that's it. So I. I I do believe we need a courthouse. I'm way beyond that. I think it should stay in the town. Ideally, I listened to our future colleague, Mr. Suttle, talk about. The cost and the public safety burden. Of placing a courthouse some other place, whether in or relying on another county to handle court functions. Or even putting a courthouse outside of the Town of Washington. And I think as as the retired superintendent of the State Police, his view is a credible one. He also articulated the other night, I don't want to speak for him, but he said it publicly. That he thinks the courthouse should remain in the Town of Washington and he's told me that privately. So. I defer to his opinion on that front and he made a very strong argument why there would be. Unanticipated costs and potential public safety implications if we were. To allow court functions to move out of the county on the extreme or even to have court functions separate and apart from the physical location of our. Our sheriff's department more locally. So to that end, I say in the town, a good looking building. And I do think that we should look at Rush River two if I if I need to reduce my speculation and fictionalization and. Imagine scenarios down to something practical. Maybe we should talk to the developers and see if if given the town's pushback. We could buy that lot. Just an idea.
Because I you're right. I think that's what we would have to. I think the statute says we have to. Right? Isn't that what it said?
It may still require refinement as well, and if look the wording contiguous land, but. Certainly is a possibility if that owner was willing to sell and there was. It was a a known set of facts and I'm sure additional study would be. More cost effective than what's been presented to you by Glavian Homes. You would eliminate all the. Engineering work to look at water sewer and. Stormwater would still be part of it. There's a lot of that's been probably done on that side.
So that's. Yeah, I'm not gonna, I don't I don't have a strong opinion about having a public meeting. That's fine, but I do. On behalf of my constituents and Ms. Ms. Bond kindly. Reminded me of my statement about my neighbor. And I was just with her the other night watching game seven of the World Series, which was an amazing game if you didn't see it. And I did the math on her. I was able to Google the assessed value of her property. And then I tried to, I ran different scenarios while we're watching the game and I could see that in fact, her additional tax burden under the current plan would be. Somewhere in the range of $280 a year, $320 a year and she can't swing it. So I. And I I heard from the superintendent the other day about increased poverty. Generally in the Rapid County population. I heard from a food pantry volunteer that. Food pantry. Patrons are on the increase somewhat dramatically. And I just cannot, setting aside the fact we need a courthouse, it should be in the Town of Washington. I'm just trying to find a way to bring that cost down so that. Someone like my neighbor maybe is looking at $150 extra a year. On the outside, not 300. So that's cutting in half and I won't revisit the separate question about additional revenue. And the county coffers, I've tried. We've tried. Maybe that's worth revisiting in the new year. But that some additional funds into the county general fund from the Town of Washington. Would help a lot, but I still don't think that additional revenue means then that we sign off on $24 million. Because we have these, as Ms. Bond and others have pointed out, we have competing. Spending priorities EMS and schools being the other two big ones and so. I'd love to realize additional revenue in the new year, whether it's from the town or through some other. Creative source creatively thought out source and also reduce costs in the courthouse and then move forward.
So do you need a motion to get these folks to see when their availability is to do this?
I think we just ask the county to find their availability.
Before it was unanimous thought among the board, but. It's hard to do consensus action if there's not clear consensus.
Well, I I just would say that the the benefit of doing editing on the building now is that it does cost us money. For them to come and do the public presentation. I mean, that's built into our. Current contract. So it isn't like they're coming and doing that for free. They're coming and doing that at a cost. And so. I have to say that I I don't believe that the current plan is the correct one and so I cannot. In good conscience vote to spend money to hold a public meeting for a product which. I I don't endorse and and don't think has any chance of success. I would rather do more editing. And refine the concept to something I think would have legs and at that point have them come on site. And do the pitch because I I just think. I think the timing's terrible, but I I think that the current concept is is too much and it will fall flat and having. Been at the helm of another concept that fell flat, I think that would be a real shame because that continues to just. Erode the public sentiment for the project in general. That's my my take. I can't support that in December.
Gary, do you know, do you know from your calculations what the. What the approximate. Annual debt service would be on, say, six between 16 and 18 million dollars, just very roughly.
Well, it's $70,000.
57,000 per million.
Yeah, per million.
It's 57.
So basically you're getting 3 million for every penny on the tax rate. Three or four million.
I completely hear everyone. I feel like we are now just circling our tails. Because we've been talking about this since 2018. We're hearing about it since 2018. I don't believe any of us have the exact answer. But I do believe there is value in hearing from people that don't attend our meetings. And I do believe this will bring folks out. And neighbors will tell neighbors and the paper will get involved and who knows what we will hear. That may actually help us change the design and save some money. Or we will come to the conclusion that yep, we have looked at this at every angle and. Other than cutting the bone that we basically all said we did not want to do, that is also an option after this meeting. I really want to hear from. All the public that has the opportunity to come out to this event and if we can find a date that works. I don't think it hurts anything to have that event.
I would just say I always look forward to hearing from the public and I think I speak for the public when I say that. That they would like to see something that will cost less money. If it's within our power to debut something. That is a better value for our taxpayers, I think it's incumbent upon us to do that and and I think to say. I just want to hear from people is is not decisive action, which is what is trying to be portrayed to be. Doing doing something just to do something is not a way forward. And I I just, I don't understand why we would, why would they, we would debut it at this time. I think it's. It's it's not going to work out well, but if that's what you all have in mind, then then that's what we'll do.
I guess I guess my question there is, and you use the word editing. You know, there's seems to be almost unanimous consternation about. My idea of spending some money to figure out alternatives in terms of a site and a different. Layout of the building and the use of different materials other than, you know, sort of historically. Consistent ones like the other billions on courthouse rows. So the $83,000 certainly did not. That idea didn't land well with people I respect, Mr. Luke and and Ms. Bruce and and some of you have already said that you don't support it. So I feel like we're kind of. We've kind of cornered ourselves here because. Even though my colleague, Ms. Smith, who I think she and I are in agreement that. This cost is a nonstarter. We're also saying, well, come up with an alternative. And I don't know how we're gonna come up with a quote unquote edited version of the building, whether in the current site or a different site. Without spending some money to do so, because I assure you Glavian Homes is not gonna give us a. Even what Mr. Curry described, you know, one floor above. Above grade and a windowless, a windowless series of rooms in the basement, even that. Editing or revision or reconfiguration. It's gonna cost money. So I'm not sure where we go. I mean, it's like, and I kind of agree with Ms. Smith that. If we roll out our current plan, for sure, we're gonna hear from the people who say it's too much and it's too expensive, it's too big. And that could be from people in the Town of Washington, it could be from other people. And then we're likely to walk away from that saying, okay, well, we can't do that. And then what? Then we need to come up with an edited version, but from what I hear from most of you. You don't want to spend $83,000 on some kind of revisiting. So. I'm kind of at a loss where we go from here.
Well, let me just clarify. I don't want to spend $83,000 on taking it out of town. So.
That's fine.
Yeah, that's so if we're gonna change the plan, it's gonna cost us money.
Right.
So right.
Okay, alright.
So it's like if we, it's, I, this is the way that I'm envisioning it. If we're gonna redo it, right, like at some point to Ms. Smith's point, we 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 they owe us a a community day. So when do we do that community day? We either do it now, get some more feedback, which I think we all know that everybody's gonna say, how can you make it cheaper? We know that. But we have a community day and then it's possible with that feedback. We could go and then start to make some changes. If we put the changes in front of the community day, I think it's gonna cost the same amount of money. So it's kind of like, which one do we want to do first? Now, I see benefit to doing both. I I mean, to Gary's point, like, what if we were to say, okay, we'll do what Gary just suggested. How much does that save us? Give us some alternative materials. How much does that save us? My point before was that in the bid that they gave us, it was $2 million for this facility we're sitting in. And the million dollars in the basement, you subtract that and you start like knocking things down like. Just, we need to make some decisive act action to get there, but what I what I'm feeling is that, do you guys want to do this now? Do you want to have that? Because that's how, that's the next step. If we're not gonna have the meeting, what we need to do is have a meeting to get it cheaper. So we need to do that. And that's it. I mean, it's like, so in my mind, I was like, okay, well, yeah, we're gonna have to spend more money doing an iteration of this because I think it's. I think all of us can say here and say like, what would they have given us an option two is probably not gonna float. That's just too much money. Right? So we need to get it down from there, but we're getting closer. So my hesitancy with the $82,000 is I don't want to take it out of town. I want to keep it in town. I want to develop this idea here, but I just think we just need to get a little bit cheaper. So.
With the $82,000 was not premised on taking it out of town. That's not how I how I phrase my motion. It was look at alternative building sites to include, what houses are in sites in town or outside of town. And it's in the parenthetical here in our agenda, it says exactly that correctly, within town or outside of town, that would save costs. So.
Well, let me just, I I just don't think we should move from this site. Like even that one down there, it's a swamp.
But that's a, that's different.
Okay, I'll I'll let me back up. I think we should put it there, which is my, we're pointing.
Okay.
Behind this one, where where we were talking about somewhere over.
That's very different than. That's very different than out of town.
Okay, but I'm sorry. I think we should put it on the property that we currently own. Which is this lot that we're sitting on and the four acres that we purchased. So somewhere in there, the, the thing is, is when do we have the community meeting? If you, i- i- is, is the next step for this board to have another brain session to get it cheaper? Is that our next step? Or do we want to have, you know, i- i- either, you're right. I mean, it's going to cost some amount of money more, we're not there yet. So yes, we're gonna have to spend some amount. So what's the right way to do that? I just, I'm trying to make.
And I just, I, I think about my experience with, and, and let's face it, a lot of what happened with the building committee. Was the misfortune of the paper printing that this courthouse was coming down. Which it's not, by the way, please don't ever print that again.
Got a lot of people.
So there was that, and then there was that people didn't like the way it looked, which, you know, with the current narration. When I bring that up, people say, oh, the facade is the easiest thing to change. Well, it's, it's too bad we didn't feel that way, you know, three hundred thousand dollars ago, but that's, it's okay. Um, what did we learn from our mistakes? And in my opinion, what I learned from my mistakes, never having done this before. Is that I would, I would like to have. Um, material that I felt good presenting to people and knowing that I had done my best. To pare things down, but yet still meet all the needs as required for the future. And for me, I'm not, I'm not there. Um, I guess maybe if three of you are, we'll have some sort of onsite meeting in December.
I don't, I don't, I, I think that we do need to make more progress, but I don't think a community is such a bad idea. I think it will inform us. I think it would, I think it could be the springboard and you and I will be gone. Like we, if we are here for that.
We're never really gone.
We're never really gone. But, but you know, there will be other people here that making those decisions and I don't know, it could be really useful. I, I just don't know, I'm trying to get that scar tissue that, you know, forms after a long process of getting through this. We gotta make some step towards something because I think we all recognize. I mean, I, I don't think that the current iteration has a lot of bells and whistles. I think it's pretty stripped down. But I do believe that there probably are cost savings that could be had with something that Gary just said. Like what if that would knock off two million dollars just by doing what he said? Well, Gary's an engineer, he just thinks about these kinds of things. And it's a pretty good point, um, but you know, how much, how much would that cost to have them go through that? I mean, you, you have a back of the envelope, mind?
Less than what they proposed, but I would.
Maybe it'd be thirty thousand dollars. Yeah, somewhere between thirty and fifty thousand dollars is probably a good ballpark.
It gave us the cost of a basement, plain versus finished out.
But not his concept.
No, no, but what I'm saying is that was a square footage number.
It's reflected, so the stairs are in the same place, elevator's in the same place, it just doesn't go on extra floors.
I mean, do you think that's worth doing? I mean, should we, uh, you, so you are, you think that that could be something that will be, find some cost savings there?
It'd be a lot less material in the building. It has to save money.
Let me do this.
It, it doesn't give you.
I've got an idea.
You guys can shoot it down. I'll make a motion. I'd like to make a motion.
Go for it.
My motion is this, um, task Glavine Homes with, it's a two-part motion. Let me start over. Part one, um, county staff to contact the owner of, uh, the corner lot in the town of Washington to see if it's for sale. And second, um, if the answer to one is yes, determine the cost. And then task Glavine Homes with looking at the Rush River Two. Property, um, using the current design and determining what cost savings could be realized by building the courthouse. On that corner lot inclusive of the land acquisition cost.
Those are the two parts?
Yeah.
I don't know that property well, but before we get too far down that, um, that road. I do, I do think that property has a history of being a swampy property, which would negate the option for building and ground. And I believe much of, uh, Rush, Rush River Commons, and you all might know more about this than I do, is built on helical piers.
I, I.
So anyway.
I think the other half is actually has rock a few feet below grade, so you, no basement.
Anyway, it, it's, that's my motion and it could die on the vine, so.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Can we, can we repeat the motion?
Yeah, the motion is county staff.
Contact Rush River Two, is it for sale? If so, have Glavine Homes.
I- if so, have Glavine Homes take their concept, look at that property. And tell us what it would cost to design a new courthouse on that property.
Before we engage Glavine Homes, could we find out if it's for sale and ask our, uh. On staff engineer to say if that site is even. An option for the building as contemplated, because I don't believe it is.
Uh, it's not with a basement, as I understand it. Uh, it would be something without a basement and.
Just, anyway, I just threw it out there. I'm not trying to telegraph what you all might do, but that's my motion. I'm just trying to.
Do we have a second?
I wouldn't mind to find out if it's for sale, but after that, I would want to know more about the property before we hire people to.
Well.
We're not hiring people, but get a quote.
My motion was two parts, so the second part.
Let's just find out if it's for sale.
Yeah, let's, let's split the motion.
So you had a motion on the floor.
Okay.
Someone could add for a friendly amendment, it could be turned down.
If you're willing to split the motion, I'll, um, I'll second the first part.
Fine.
Okay.
Alright, so we have a motion to find out if the property's for sale.
Which, which is hardly, hardly drives the need for a motion, I could just call and ask, but.
Why don't we just ask the county to find out if it's for sale?
I withdraw my motion, could you just find out if it's for sale?
Thank you.
So I, I really do think that what we should do is either have this meeting or I do think what Gary is bringing up here is a good idea. Maybe we do that and then have the meeting.
Well, it's possible to do both.
Yeah, is it possible?
He goes ahead and asks Glavine Homes to find out what that would be. And the meeting with the populists could talk about both.
If you have any interest in exploring potential change in this design along the lines I suggested. Perhaps there's a dollar amount that you would be going to invest in that.
Yeah, like what is our top dollar?
Like a limit, and then if I can negotiate to that point, then we.
I don't want to spend any more than eighteen million dollars.
No, 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 no.
No, 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 they're gonna balance it for them.
For design.
For the design.
I'm a study.
So it's like twenty-five thousand dollars. But I think that that should be in it. I think that that should be in it. And we've talked about this before, I think one of the things we could have done at the beginning of this.
Yeah, set a budget.
We're not spending more than this. So let's just do that.
Well, the current one is eighteen point eight, plus all the design.
But, but there's all this stuff, so it's like, you know, I, I've been trying to chop it up and shave it off. And I really think we're gonna do a disservice if we do one courtroom and I think we need a jury deliberation room, we need these things. And, you know, I, it's, it's a hundred-year building, it's a hundred and fifty-year building. So can we do this into your suggestion, a little bit cheaper? But maybe looking at some alternative materials and maybe readjusting the plan like you have just suggested. It's not a bad idea, it's a good idea. And if we can realize some cost savings.
So how much are you okay spending to do that, is what he's asking?
I, I know, I know, I know.
Cause I agree with you.
Otherwise it's iterative and I'll bring you the scope at the next meeting.
But so.
If you want to make progress before the next meeting, I'd need to know. And then we just don't have any money to do it.
How do you all feel about that? How do you, I just, I'm trying to facilitate some progress.
I mean, I, I think it's important to, to make it clear to Glavine Homes that we are seeking ways to simplify. And, and find savings in the current, um, proposal. Because it is not landing well with our constituents in the county. And we find ourselves once again at the helm of a project. That is in danger of not going anywhere. For which we have invested substantial taxpayer dollars.
They watch these meetings.
We like the proposed location.
We like the proposed location. We are seriously challenged by the price tag. And we would entertain any and all options. To cut the budget for that building. And we need to realize a cost savings. Well, what's the break even point? If it costs us fifty thousand dollars in redesign, which I think is a reasonable number. Um, that's a million dollars. So we asked them to save, you know, millions of dollars and, and we call it a win.
There's your motion.
Um, I, I, and so if, I think we need to ask them to shave at least six million dollars off the price of the building. And if that's unreasonable, they can work with staff, um.
That's a third of the bill.
And do it, and do it.
That's a big ask.
Do you mean six million, or, so do you mean bring it, so what's your top dollar?
I would like to see it not go above fifteen or sixteen personally.
Wow.
Everything.
Well, yeah, and so, and like not to echo Ron Macala again for the second time in one day, but in some part, figure out some parking too. And for people that say, well, there won't be any really more people coming to court than there are now. We currently don't have board of supervisors meetings in court at the same time. Sometimes there's a lot of people here for the board of supervisors meetings, depending on what the topic is. And suddenly you're trying to accommodate all of the people parking for the board meeting and all of the people parking for court. And you're also going to have hopefully one day in the near future, a popular restaurant located almost directly across the street. In the old supermarket. And their people are gonna need a place to park as well. So their patrons will be looking for parking, the board people, board attendees will be looking for parking. People looking to come to court will be looking for parking. It's gonna be a mess. I mean, I went by patio's today to get a cup of coffee before I came to the meeting. And there was not a parking spot in that parking lot on a weekday in November. So if you don't think that parking is going to be a problem, I assure you it will be a problem.
And the inn's taking away parking with the spa.
Yeah.
So sorry, I'm, I, I got off. Did we set a, amount of money that we were okay with Glavine Homes to?
Well, I said sixteen million and we shouldn't spend any more than fifty thousand on the redesign. And I really hate to be the one assigning dollar amounts.
Fifty thousand on redesign?
Yeah, I think that's.
That seems like a lot to me, but.
We asked many times in the course of designing this courthouse, for them to come to the table from Glavine Homes. And time after time, individual members of this board were rebuffed and told, no, we can't make it simpler. No, we can't save you any money. No, you have to do this. I am saying to you as your peer, that we need to speak as a board. And tell Glavine Homes that we really expect, and respect their work and we appreciate all that they've done. But this project will not fly in our county at its currently proposed. And we need your help to get this over the finish line. And I'm sorry if I'm loud, but I, I'm very impassioned that. You know, I've seen all of us do it. I've seen all of us ask Glavine Homes to help us with this. And we were all rebuffed as individuals and we need to speak as one voice on this issue.
After motion, I'll second it.
Well, that's an open blank.
Golly. So I mean, what is everybody, I don't think we should spend more than fifteen, sixteen million dollars. And I don't think we should spend any more than fifty thousand dollars in redesign.
I'll second that motion.
I, I agree with your fifty thousand thing. I think it's maybe impossible to do it for us. And my, I, I don't know, I, I think eighteen with parking. I, I just can't, I have a hard time.
I'm not, I'm.
They gave us a twenty-four million.
I don't want to quibble about two million dollars. I think if they can, I think.
I'm just being realistic.
With Gary works with them and they say, hey, we're in an impasse, it can't be done, then we need to get that conversation going. But that's where I feel my feet are to the fire. Um, and, and you know, we've already dug ourselves in with the budget for next year. We're already down pennies. What are we down, two or three pennies in the hole for next year?
Two so far.
So we're already in a hole. We gotta start digging ourselves out of this hole.
I, I agree, and I think setting a number is a really good thing to do.
Wow, heaven forbid you let me do it.
So.
So sixteen million include design fees and furniture fixture and equipment? Or is sixteen million?
What's the apples to apples, what's the?
Eighteen point eight million is the current construction cost, plus it was nine seventy-three for a basement. And then you had, you know, two, uh, almost three for design. And a million for furniture fixtures and equipment.
That gets you to the twenty-four million basically.
That's what gets you to the twenty-four.
Yeah, then just stick to the building, yeah.
So I just want to know what the sixteen is, remains to.
I don't want the, I don't.
What, what did he say?
If the basement is part of the cost saving measure, then I can live with the basement.
Right.
The building at, at, what was it, eighteen eight?
Eighteen.
That's what we're really trying to save money on.
Exactly. So if we can get that down to sixteen million, that's what essentially I was saying.
Could you rewrite this, the, the, the furniture we should be doing anyway, because we have.
Oh, it is, it's separate, it's just something we gotta pay.
Yeah, that's just their, it's just their.
It, it's my number.
Estimate, yeah, okay.
It's easier to communicate to people the building cost instead of all the add-ons.
Agreed.
And, and, because then we can all look people in the eye and say, we're talking about the building, this is what it's gonna cost.
So a budget of fifty thousand dollars to redesign with the intent to bringing. Building construction to sixteen.
Yes.
I, I wish it was gonna be lower. Y'all know I want, y'all, y'all saw me quibble over five hundred dollars today, do not leave me in charge of this number.
Well, it's your motion. I'm just trying to understand the motion.
I will just, if I can, just remind everyone from the July minutes. Ms. Comer asked Mr. Moore what the community would have to sacrifice to drive the entire project cost below twenty million. Mr. Moore stated that if the project is to meet the state court facility guidelines. And the materials used are reflective of a once in a lifetime building. He felt the reduction from concept two to concept two revised was not just cutting fat, it was cutting bone. So to go from twenty million to sixteen million, I don't see that that is feasible.
That's what I want to do. I think that's totally realistic.
Right.
Eighteen point eight, I'd rather have them say, you can't do it than not. And I'm comfortable with that.
I, I think, I think it's totally realistic with, with Gary's input and his ideas about how to bury some of the building.
If we hear what the basement does.
I think that we can go back to the table and save some money and I think we ought to do it now.
Plus, I don't think that this harms us at all. It, 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 it does kick the ball down the road a couple of months, but I, I just really do think that if we're gonna do the community meeting. That we need to have.
This last piece of the puzzle?
The community meeting is gonna have a placard up there that has a twenty-four million dollar price tag.
Yep.
Well, again.
And so I just think that we do need to. Do this. And who knows, maybe, you know, maybe Gary's idea knocks off, you know, ten or twelve million dollars.
We would love to save more, there's, there's no amount of money that we would turn away saving. We would love to save as much money as we could.
But it should be a hundred-year building.
We have to tie the, we have to be really clear in our communication with Glavine Homes and with the public. Because everyone's now throwing around this number of twenty-four million. But clearly twenty-four million is plus, plus, plus. It's a building plus all this stuff.
Yep.
So it's really important, it's really important that we talk about the building. It's currently eighteen point eight. I, I think sixteen off, if sixteen is your number as a reduction from eighteen point eight. I think we go farther than that because. Cause that's, well, that's. That's two million dollars and the related debt service, I don't think.
It's almost three million dollars, say pretty much.
Well, she's talking about sixteen.
The debt service would be a penny, a penny on the tax rate in perpetuity for the life of the debt service. If it's three million dollars.
I don't think we want to go lower than sixteen.
Uh, you're gonna get to an indeterminate, you know, problem. Where I want, you know, I'm gonna spend money to get you to twelve and they're gonna say, but doesn't, doesn't compute. Right. So what, I'm gonna go run a hamster wheel for a while to tell you it doesn't work.
Say sixteen million or less.
And that's your goal, I get it, but they could also come back and say, it saves one million.
And they may very well do that.
It only saves a million.
They may very well do that.
To save as much as possible.
Right, sixteen million dollars or more.
Yeah, and, and bands.
Or less.
They're just not gonna guarantee it, walking into a fifty thousand dollar task that, okay, I'm gonna start the task with the goal of. Coming out the end at sixteen million dollars, they don't know. They don't know if they're gonna get there. So do they, you know, they can't in good faith start a task and say that, that they don't know the end of the plan.
Well, I, I would hope that.
I don't understand that's the goal.
I think if you ask, that if, if you go to them with this ask. They are, they are gonna think you guys are nuts, but then they're gonna get to work. And I would think at some point, a true professional would. Either they're gonna rejoice and like, oh, hey, look what we discovered we could do. Or they'll contact you and say, Mr. Curry, we can't.
Right.
We can't do this. So I definitely agree. I honestly think they could probably do this redesign with some of the things that we've suggested, cheaper than fifty thousand. Cause you think they quoted us eighty-two thousand on a completely new, brand new site thing. So we're not asking them to do a brand new site, we're asking them to do the same site with a different thing.
You can probably get a, so the cost estimate you have now is very detailed. I mean, if you've looked at it. They can give you a, an initial estimate of, is this, is there any, is it possible to do, well, save anything? You know, I mean, bigger rounding error and then funnel it in if it, if, if, I've said before, if there's any there, there.
And are you all willing to live without the plaza?
I think the plaza's gotta go anyways, it's ended up being a drop-off point for it, people, but.
And are you willing, are you willing to throw in the facade if there's money saving? And are you willing, are you willing to throw in the facade if there's money-saving measures there?
I want them to get to this number, however they get there.
We, I mean, we've mentioned those two items a couple of times.
Yeah, I don't know what it is, but however they can get there, so that the public can see, hey, this is where we started years ago. This is where we ended up about six months ago, eight months ago, whatever, and then here's where we ended up now. The public's gonna see a progression, they're gonna see a thought process, and they're gonna see deliberation. And, you know, they'll at least see that this kind of thing is happening, because I think it's eye-watering. I think that the people in Kopev were looking at a hundred million dollar courthouse.
It's one-ten.
Yeah, now it's.
Also, I'll just, I'll, I know everyone gets tired of me looking at other places. Like, I, I see people on the benches roll their eyes, like, I know everyone gets tired, but I did stumble onto. Cumberland County, Virginia, in February of twenty twenty-five, just voted, they are on a, uh. A courthouse project, I got tickled because if you read the news article. In that, about that process, all you have to do is change names. Like, all you have to do is change names, and it's like, oh, yeah, I've been there, done that. But, I, I will share, it's, it's, and it's just painful, all, and I'm just sharing this to know, so that you all know you're not alone. Um, they, they voted in February to build, um, their courthouse project. Um, they used HBA Architects, they paid a hundred seventy-three thousand dollars for their space analysis. Um, their courthouse, I believe, I can't find it right now, but I'm pretty certain they, what they came up with. Is thirty-five thousand square feet to the tune of thirty-seven five, thirty-seven million. Five hundred eighty-six, seven hundred twenty-five dollars. Um, and, and that county only has ten thousand people in it, and I believe they, um. There are lots of missteps or a little sloppy there, wouldn't you agree, um?
I would never criticize another locality.
I would say that the judges have written very stern letters to the community.
Yes, I, I will say that, as I read that as well, so I, I share that for a couple of reasons. The cost per square foot on that is, if I did my math correct, about a thousand, over a thousand. Dollars per square foot, um, so. Again, it is a painful process, um.
Well, the good news is, I think we're, I mean, maybe this is bad news. I think the good news is that unlike Peter Luke's ad when maybe there was some wiggle room. When that board was talking about a new courthouse, maybe it wasn't critical, maybe it was, there weren't these other localities that were getting mean letters from judges. We're well beyond that point, so I can, I can state unequivocally to anyone who asks me, and I always cite the Quickie Mark ground. I can look everyone there in the eye, say, guys, gotta have a courthouse. And I would agree, I would, I did try to raise alternative ideas in the spirit of trying. But I would agree, town of Washington makes sense, it's where it should be historically and otherwise, and for the reasons. That Mr. Gary Settles pointed out, um, so yeah, we've gotta do it, we've gotta get it done. I think Donna's anecdote from Cumberland is excellent, and it's useful, it's a useful benchmark, because with all things. Sometimes we feel alone and unique, and we're not, and we're not. So, let's just get the cost down, and then we can at least say to people. We got it down, and that's about all we can do, so sixteen million for the building.
Not to exceed sixteen million.
Not, not to exceed sixteen million, and Gary can spend, or can authorize him to spend up to fifty thousand on the.
Not to exceed fifty thousand.
What's that?
Not to exceed fifty thousand dollars.
Just to make sure you understand how we would have to do that, um, because you can't appropriate any more money right now, because you're at your one percent limit. We would borrow money from the envelope project and then pay it back later.
That's fine, it's not, nothing's happening really anyway, is there?
Well, we're getting there.
Do we need a motion for this?
Yeah, there is already a motion.
Is that motion been made, has it been seconded?
She's been working around it.
Yeah, Ms. Smith made the motion, Mr. Whitson seconded, fifty thousand redesign, sixteen million building.
I'll second it.
You already, you already seconded.
Well, I told her I would, and I didn't know if she, so if her motion is formulated, she confirms it, then I will second it. Are you okay with that?
I, it sounds good to me.
Oh, four million, what?
What?
No, it was no more than sixteen million, no more than fifty K.
Okay.
Right? We have a motion, we have a second.
And it's a building, it's a building.
Building and building.
Yes.
All those in favor, oh, no, sorry, discussion.
I was just gonna say, yeah, with the very specific ideas that we laid out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Gary's cost-saving extravagant.
Yes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
That was easy.
Thank you.
Guys, I think we, we've made progress.
Anything worth doing is usually messy.
This won't take a long time to find out. If they're listening on, on tape, it's.
We need to round it up, shall we do the rest of the agenda in the evening?
Sure.
Subdivision process notification policy is still under old business. What do you need?
Just gotta grab something.
Oh.
Yeah, Christine just suggested that maybe we move everything to the evening, so we can go home and eat.
Um, I was gonna get through the very last item on old business, 'cause I don't think it'll take long.
And then we can do everything else.
Then we can do everything else.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Sure.
Sure, so, uh, the board adopted a revised subdivision ordinance. Uh, to last meeting, uh, discussed the need for a policy for notification. Um, and directed staff to pull something together, we pulled something together, it is attached. The meat of this policy is in this table. Um, currently subdivisions require no notification whatsoever. Except for family divisions, which, uh, we must notify neighbors. Um, so staff is proposing that for vacating a line, which is if somebody owns two parcels and you're taking a line out in the middle. There's, you don't notify anybody, boundary line adjustment is similar scenario. Uh, family divisions, we would continue to follow state law. Uh, then for a minor division, we would put the application materials on the county website and post a sign.
Could, could we please delay this item until this evening, because we have had, we have had no feedback on this. And I suspect that the people that may have feedback on this will probably be in attendance this evening.
Certainly they might, but they should have known it was on the day's agenda.
I don't think they could attend during the day. We heard a lot from the public, and I think those people are gonna, if y'all wanna vote it through, that's fine, but.
Is there a motion to move it to tonight?
Yeah, I just wanted to move the rest of the agenda to the night.
Um.
What else do we have?
Not much.
We have quite a bit, but.
Yeah, one from the wrong thing to.
To.
Well, you just have this in the Chester, Chester Gap mailbox, so when do you want those things to night if somebody's making a motion?
Well, we're doing information reports and we're on this tonight, we're doing all that, right?
Yeah, I, I would recommend that we, I would make the motion that we move everything else to the evening agenda.
So from G three down.
After new business, so this would be follow everything on the evening agenda?
Yeah.
And let, let's rearrange, um, maybe, can you, can you also talk about the order, so we can put the issue family?
Well, that is first.
Yeah, it'll be fine.
Okay.
So we're going everything after new business, is that what you're saying?
That's correct, everything that's left on this agenda will fall after the new business electrical transmission line regulatory authority review.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Sorry, I didn't try.
It's okay.
Motion to adjourn?
Resess until seven.
Time changed, so it'll feel early, right?
Short timer's disease.
I tried to adjourn before the courthouse discussion.
I've done that.